Okay, we're live. Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Review Session for October 4th, 2022. There is no public testimony during the review session. We will begin with the special order calendar, new cases, item number thirty-seven, one twenty-nine ninety-seven BZ, one fifty dash sixty-five, Cross Island Parkway, Queens.
We have received proof of service of initial filing and proof of hearing. Community Board has voted to approve the project. This is an application for an extension of term for twenty years and a waiver of rules of procedure to permit continuing operation, continued operation of a gasoline service station and an automobile service establishment and an as-of-right retail use group, retail of use group six. The prior term had expired in November of twenty eighteen. So this is a corner lot. It has mixed up as-of-right uses like use group six, retail uses, convenience store and gasoline service station and a lubitorium. The gasoline service station lubitorium has been part of the, has been under BSA jurisdictions since nineteen forty. The last, I think the certificate of occupancy that was issued in two thousand and five expired on twenty eighteen. So with regards to the application, I did not see a proof of continuous use. I do go by this site quite often, so I know it is fully in operation. However, for the record, the applicant should provide a proof of continuous use. I think a Google Street View should be sufficient to address that. Also, a compliance chart, I did not see it in the file, that should be provided. The applicant is basically continuing to, is proposing to maintain the same existing use, no change in operation or hours of operation. I did not see, there was a sign analysis provided, but it was not for both streets frontages, that should be provided. With regards to the site plan, the site plan refers to a new retaining wall and proposed canopy. And I think that was from the last iteration of plans that were submitted to the board. So these are existing. So the applicant should correct it and remove those notations. Applicant should provide photos of the perimeter and interior site condition. Lumen analysis was not provided. Now, given the site topography, and I think the commissioners will recall, abutting this site is a car cleaning operation, which was at a below grade and there were residential homes above. So this is right next to it. So where this site is situated, it is situated at a much lower grade than the residential homes that, that is located behind it. And the building is sitting right along the lot line, rear lot line. So I do not think there are, there are any lights along the rear lot line associated with the gas station and the lubitorium. And given the site topography, I do not think that a light at this level, at a lower level would have any impact on the residential homes that are located above at a higher grade elevation. Though the applicant should confirm that and state it in its statement. And I don't have any other comments. There were violations, those, those, I believe those were corrected. Applicant states and that only thing it requires is, and that it needs to be removed from the system. I don't have any other comments. Commissioner Otley Brown?
You actually said it all. I don't have any other comments.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you. I agree. I'm not going to be repeating what you said, but I do agree with you on the luminescent topic. I don't think luminescence is needed.
Okay.
Hear me?
Yes, you're, you're cracking, your voice is cracking a little bit. If you can come closer to the microphone, please.
Sure. Is that okay?
Yes, that is better.
Okay. So I repeat what I said. I said I do agree with you regarding the lumen topic. I don't think lumen is needed. The reason I'm saying that is because I don't see any lights by the residential line in the back. The only thing that I can see is the building. It's a gigantic building. And I don't see any like lighting units over there. So I don't think the lumen units or the lighting units by the street are going to be reaching the residential lot line in the back by any chance. So luminescence period is not needed. The only thing I would add is that interior forest, they should cover the two drains, maybe two or more, but I can see two from Google images, I believe. We need to see these floor drains and we need to see how they are functioning. That's all. If somebody inside can just open a hose, take like a very short video for like a minute or two, show us that they are draining, that would be very helpful. The reason I'm saying that because the side drain is very heavy, it's, it's like very steep. And, and when, when it rains, I would say that if the floor drains are not working, significant runoff will be coming out of the site. And we don't want to see that. We want to make sure that the drains are working and they are in good condition. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. And I don't think I saw the drains indicated in the plan, so.
Yes, they are not.
There, that can be reflected in the plan also. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shabata?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I don't, I don't have anything to add. I'm not sure if it was mentioned that the community board approved the, the application. It was? I have nothing more to say then.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Yun?
The only thing I want to add is that one of the previous conditions was that no automobiles except customers and employees be parked on the site. And when I was there, I saw that there was a commercial truck parked for chimney roofing, a contractor. It was definitely a commercial vehicle and there were also signs marketing for chimney roofing on the perimeter of the site. So I think the applicant should just confirm that that truck should not be parked there regularly. And then also there was a small stack of tires along the west side, west side of the property that they should clean up.
Okay. So you saw a signage that indicated that there was a marketing for chimney roofing?
Signage and a truck parked there.
Okay.
Kind of tucked away in the corner of the site.
Thank you for bringing that to the attention of the board. That is definitely not permitted, so that should be corrected. Thank you. Any other comments from any, anyone? Okay, all right. Next case, please.
Item number thirty-eight, seven seven nine fifty-seven BZ, one thirty-seven twenty-five Jamaica Avenue, Queens. This item has been postponed. They're looking to sell the property and they need about ninety days, they said.
Yeah, yeah. Next case?
Next item is item number thirty-nine, three forty-eight seventy-five BZ, ten fifty Forest Avenue, Staten Island. This is an extension of term. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, okay. We have received proof of service of initial filing and proof of hearing. Community Board has voted to approve with the following conditions, that the appointment, appointment scheduling be established. Clients should be allowed inside the building per regulations, provide two pet waste units along Forest Avenue and monitor and clean them, reduce usable square footage on the deck to reduce clients on the deck. This is an act, extent, application for an extension of term to allow an animal hospital with accessory caretaker's unit for a ten-year term. This application has been under BSA jurisdictions since nineteen seventy-five. The last extension was granted in twenty twelve and it expired, the term expired in April of twenty twenty-two. So a proof of continuous use is not required. A compliance chart analysis was provided. The applicant is proposing to continue the use and there is no change in ownership or in operation with regards to the hours of operations and such. The applicant states with regards to the community board's concern, applicant provided a letter stating that during COVID, the facility was not allowing people inside and now with, now they are allowing clients in the waiting room. And I don't know if you all have seen it, additional photos were submitted last week of additional trash containers that were put in for pet waste unit. There were two of them that were provided. And one by the staircase, one by the parking area. And I think the applicant has kind of responded to most of the comments. And I'm assuming one of the questions that the community had was reduce the square footage of the deck to reduce clients waiting at the deck was as a result of the COVID. And now that the clients are allowed to be inside, I'm not sure if that is an issue. And also I looked at the plan and the deck is really a circulation deck. There isn't much of a waiting area per se. So I'm, I'm not quite sure what, if I'm missing anything and maybe the applicant can clarify that at the hearing. I have no other comments. Commissioner Otley Brown?
Yes, I just wanted to shed some light on the practices because I actually have visited a vet during COVID and this was one of the COVID management operations that almost all veterinary and offices put into place during COVID, which was not to allow any patient parents in the building, basically. And what they would do usually is the nurse or the doctor would come out, collect the pet, examine the pet, then bring the pet back out to you and then have a conference with you about what was wrong. So I, you know, I understand that they were kind of, I think these might have been rules or a law, a local law that was adopted during this time. So they were kind of caught between a rock and a hard place. And I'm sure that they really do want to welcome everybody back into the office. So I don't think it'll be a problem with compliance with the community board wishes going forward.
Thank you for that clarification. You have no additional comments?
I have no additional comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I have nothing else to add.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shabata?
Thank you. I have nothing else to add. That was very thorough.
Thank you. Commissioner Yun?
I have no further comments.
Great. Thank you. Next case, please.
Item number four, item number forty-six seventeen eighty BZ, seven seventy-seven eighty McDonald Avenue, Brooklyn. This is an extension of term for catering facility?
We have received proof of service of the initial filing and proof of hearing. Community Board has waived its opportunity to weigh in. This is an application for an extension of term for a period of ten years till July, excuse me, July twenty thirty, that expired in July twenty twenty for a continuous use of a, continued use of a catering establishment. This is a site that has been under BSA jurisdictions since nineteen eighty. The last extension that was granted was in twenty-ten and the proof of continuous use, I think in this case it has been in continuous use, but for the fact during pandemic, because of all the local restrictions, the site was temporarily closed during pandemic, but it has been in continuous operation. So I'm not sure. I do not think a proof of continuous use documentation is needed in this case. In terms of the compliance chart, the applicant has provided the information. In addition, has provided a parking agreement with the facility at four eighty-seven Dahill Road. The only question I have on that one is I didn't see it in the resolution, but was there any specified sort of parking spaces that was mentioned that had to be retained or set aside and at the Dahill Road? That was not quite clear in the parking agreement. My main question with regards to the proposed plan is in the proposed plan, the applicant is showing an outdoor refrigerated trash enclosure, which doesn't seem to be part of the subject site. It seems to be located in a different zoning lot. And so my question is, if it is, I, we need to know, the board needs to know how the, where that zoning lot is, need to provide the zoning lot information, need to provide lease agreement for the use of the lot and, and it needs to be included in the plan and in our board resolution. More importantly, how is the trash being transferred to that zoning lot? Is it, is it abutting the site? Is there a connection? It was not at all clear. So the applicant needs to walk us through the, the trash collection and pickup operation of this site and how it is not being a main reason for asking this question, that it is not a nuisance to the community. And it is safely stored away and collected at the designated time without being an impediment to the community. That's really my main comment. I just had a more of my personal clarification with regards to a note that I saw from PDC and DOT approval of a fence and planter. I know that's not before the board, but I just kind of wanted for my information what that is. There are three open violations. I would just like the applicant to clarify what the nature of those violations are. Other than that, I don't have any comments. Commissioner Otley Brown?
So I was just wondering if there's any signage on this site. I don't recall. And also I had a same question about the refrigerated trash area in the rear that does not look like it's on this lot and wanted to know how that worked. No other questions?
Okay, thank you. The other thing that I forgot to mention, I saw a lot of barbed wires along the roof line. I know this is an interior lot and not directly visible, but I just wanted to know if that's a major issue of that needs to be retained, if there's an alternate way of addressing the property edges, securing the property edges. Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you. I, I just want to know whether there is any complaints from the neighbors. And, and in the statement of facts, I believe I did see that they are saying there is no DUB violation. I'm not sure if you have the violations you refer to as ECB.
Okay. Yeah, maybe it's ECBs. Okay. So if the applicant can just clarify any outstanding violations and what the status is. Yeah.
That's all what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shabata?
Nothing further from me. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. The only thing I thought would be great to be clarified is that the statement of facts was from August of twenty twenty and mentions that the premises is currently closed, but I imagine it is operating again, since it is legal now to operate such an establishment. So if they could confirm that and let us know what the current operation is since the pandemic and since reopening, presuming that they have. Also, just to confirm, I went by the site recently and there was no signage except for the main palace logo in front of the entry. And they have recently updated all their plantings, it looks like, based on some of these DOT submissions that we received. So those were all looking very, very new and very beautiful. So that all seems well maintained, at least from the street frontage.
Great. So yeah, we did not receive a signage analysis. So the applicant should provide a signage analysis and indicated in the plan also. Thank you. Yes. Council, Vine, and then Commissioner Sheta. First, General Counsel Vine.
Thank you. On the question or the issue of barbed wire or razor wire, I'd ask the board to engage Deputy Chief Inspector Daly during the public hearing portion of this application as barbed wire and razor wire may pose a threat to firefighters accessing this site in an emergency.
Okay, good point. Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Regarding the violations, I did, I did look at the statement of facts and it says they, they attached it actually a printout of the DUB violations, but the ACBs are not existing. So there is no ECB violation, but the DUB, they attached the printout. So I, apparently I was confused. Thank you.
Okay. So those are DUB violations. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for checking in. It always helps. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, let's go to the next case.
The next item is appeals calendar, continued hearing items. Item number forty-one, twenty twenty-one fifty-seven A, nineteen ninety Highland Boulevard, Staten Island. I emailed you the board yesterday that DOT had some more comments.
Yeah, I was a little confused. I thought DOT has signed off and then DOT had additional comments. Is that what it is?
Yeah, they had comments about the ramp and some plans. And the applicant, when they made this submission, made a submission in response to DOT, which I forwarded to them. And I asked them if they had any further comments and this is what I received yesterday.
Okay, so that means we don't have a DOT sign off yet?
No, and I sent these to Ms. Foladere and she said she forwarded to the architect to review.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I was a bit confused when I saw it. Okay. So the initial hearing of the application was held in July of this year. The applicant has submitted its response to comments that were raised at the last hearing. The comments were mostly regarding the plan. The applicant has revised the floor area analysis by, and basically we had asked the applicant to include the cellar space into the floor area, but it is deductible since it's a cellar space and it's not a first floor, it's a cellar space. And the applicant has modified the curb cut location, the pet ramps. Initially, there were three curb cuts. It's been now reduced to one curb cut. Now, we do have additional DOT comments, so those need to be addressed. And notes, applicant needs to add notes regarding flood zone. I don't know if those notes were added. I didn't see it in the plan and we have not received any comments from fire department on this one. Have we? Okay.
I don't have anything.
All right. So those are my comments. Commissioner Otley Brown?
Yes, they revised the plans now for one curb cut and they reorganized the parking space so that it accesses that exit in that curb cut. No other comments?
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you. I just want to add two things. Number one, regarding the flood. This is, this building is going to be in the flood zone most likely, so we need to add a note to make sure that they comply with Appendix G and we're not taking any position on that. Other thing is regarding the flood as well. And this is the flood vents, the size and the distribution. We're not taking any position on that. We did review them. So they are beyond our scope. Just wanted to put this in the record. The other thing is, this is a clarification on one of the drawings. Let me see what drawing is this. And this is kind of advice. I'm not reviewing their structural drawings. On drawing A dash oh oh six dash or point zero one, I'm talking about detail number three foundation. This detail is, is, has something that's incorrect, which is the top rebar layout. They need to take a look at it if they want. If they do not, this is their fault. But it's just I saw something and I'm saying something. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Shabata?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Nothing further from me on this.
Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. Nothing further from me.
Thank you. Next case, please.
New cases, item forty-two, twenty twenty-one twenty-two A, five hundred and twenty-four, Staten Island. This is a proposed development of a two-story office and warehouse building, not fronting on a legally mapped street pursuant to GCL thirty, section thirty-six.
We have received proof of service of initial filing and proof of hearing. Community Board has voted to approve the application. As mentioned, this is an application for a GCL thirty-six to allow a development of a two-story office plus warehouse building on the subject lot that is not fronting on a legally mapped street. We have, this building is fronting on industrial loop. It is a two-way road, which is accessed from Arthur Kill Road. There is a declaration of easement for access via industrial loop. And we have received comments from DEP. There are still some outstanding comments that DEP requires that needs to be provided by the applicant. We have not received an FDNY letter on this one. The applicant is proposing two curb cuts, a twenty-foot wide curb cut to access the loading area and an eighteen-foot curb cut to access the parking space. And the applicant is proposing a full width sidewalk along the frontage according to the plan. However, I would like to know what is the width of the sidewalk indicated on the plan and provide a builder's pavement plan of the first sidewalk. Though I recognize it's not something that DOT is going to review, but this is for the file so that the sidewalk is built to pursuant to what the city standards would be. I did not see photos of the site condition. I did see aerials, so it would be helpful to know what the frontage looks like and any other issues that we need to be aware of in considering this application, GCL thirty-five, sorry, thirty-six. Those are my comments. Commissioner Otley Brown?
As industrial loop is a well-known, very heavily used industrial warehouse use area, I really have no comments about this case.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I believe the application was very clear and thorough and I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shabata?
It was a, thank you, Vice Chair. It was a thorough application. I have no comments.
Thank you. And Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I have no further comments.
Okay. Thank you. Onto the next case, please.
Item number forty-three, twenty twenty-two nineteen A, one twenty-one Storer Avenue, Staten Island. This is a development of a two-story warehouse and office building, not fronting a map street pursuant to contrary to general city law, section thirty-six.
We have received proof of service of initial filing and proof of hearing. Community Board has voted to approve this case. This is an application seeking a GCL thirty-six waiver to develop a two-story office plus warehouse on the subject lot that is not fronting on legally mapped street. This is a true lot, which has frontage on Storer Avenue and, and Lundston Avenue. Lundston Avenue at this section of the site is not even developed. It is very overgrown with natural habitats. And this, so Storer Avenue is the only point of access for this site. My comments are that the existing sidewalk width, so there is a existing sidewalk now on the Storer Avenue frontage and the sidewalk width is ten foot at one end and eight foot at the other end. The applicant is proposing to connect the two sidewalks and with, because of that, the width of the sidewalk changes from ten foot down to eight foot and results in a curb cut that is not parallel to the roadway. It is somewhat skewed. So I just want to know from the applicant, is it not possible to keep the ten-foot width continuous all the way? Um, so I just want to know from the applicant, is it not possible to keep the ten-foot width continuous all the way? And then it kind of just um tucks in to the eight-foot width of the sidewalk and then uh the curb cut uh gets straightened out. Wouldn't that make it easier for vehicles to access the building? Um, the statement of fact um should also clarify the status of Lundston Avenue. Um, since the site is a through lot site and it has two street frontages, though not a legally mapped street. And uh just kind of a narrative should be sufficient um uh for that reason. I have no other comments uh on this. Uh, Commissioner Otley Brown.
I have no other comments.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sheta. Commissioner Sheta.
Yeah, sorry, Vice Chair. Uh, yeah, I have no further comments on this. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Shibeta.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Nothing further from me on this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Yun.
Um, I have no further comments. Also, Ms. Pranga's hand is up.
Oh, oh, God, again, my screen went into that funny mode. Uh, okay, sorry, Ms. Pranga.
Oh, no worries. Um, the commissioner should speak before staff, right? Um, um, thanks. Um, I just wanted to state that um we have a D E P sign off for this.
Um, okay, great. But, okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next case.
Zoning calendar continued hearing items. Item number forty four, twenty twenty six eighty six. B Z fifteen Parkville Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay. This application was last heard on May twenty third. Um, the board was waiting for a Z R D one regarding the applicability of zoning resolution section forty three dash three zero three. Um, the applicant has submitted a Z R D one um to D O B and D O B confirmed that zoning resolution section forty three dash three oh three is not applicable. And the portion of the parking facility that is located within the R five uh portion of the zoning lot may be considered um a permitted obstruction. Thus, the ramp um to the parking space located within the residential uh dis- uh residential district portion can be utilized to access the portion of the accessory parking lot um located in the M portion. Uh, as you know, this site is split between an M one and R five district. The applicant has revised the plan to include uh fire departments and D O T's uh comments. Uh, including the latest D O T set of comments that we uh received uh in um on September twenty ninth. And the applicant has also submitted his uh response uh to D O T's comments quickly. Um, I think the last that I saw was uh with regards to an extension of the curb cut at the intersection uh in front of the proposed relocated uh bus stop at the corner of Parkville. Um, so.
Vice Chair, oh, so Vice Chair, we receive, we receive something recently from D O T and I don't know if Ms. Benkey wants to comment on that now, right now.
Yes, please go ahead. Um, Ms. Benkey.
Sure. Um. D O T issued comments this, well, last night and um they said that it's could be considered a conditional sign off. They had some items they wanted the board to um use as a condition. Um, if they're amenable, including the site plan should include a note at the relocated bus stop that the applicant will install a curb extension, which will require further D O T review and approval. In addition, the site plan should continue, uh, sorry, should include a general note that this drawing is illustrative and still requires approval. And that the applicant will continue to coordinate with D O B, D O T for review and approval. There's also, um, they would like a condition of the B S A approval. Um, that the applicant is responsible for all costs associated um with the relocation of the D O T street light pole. And the applicant is responsible for all costs associated with design and construction of the relocated bus stop, including the curb extension.
Okay. Um, should we ask the applicant to provide a commitment letter?
Yes, D O T actually provided us a form that they have to fill out for um um, for the street light pole. Perhaps.
What about the curb of?
Right, I, they didn't mention that, but perhaps a a letter would be.
Yeah.
Would be helpful, yes.
Okay, so if you can just confirm with D O T and forward that to the applicant and the applicant can uh confirm during the uh hearing um their commitment to do so, because that will be critical to us uh for the board to co- consider the next steps.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I actually, I I'm glad you mentioned because my comments were um incorporating D O T's comments. And I only saw it reflected. I think this was prior to the last set of comments. So the plans need to be updated to reflect all the D O T comments. And it should be reflected not just on the site plan, but also on the ground floor plan um or any other floor plans where um D O T related plan um actions are going to be shown. I just want to be consistent. So in case the plan set goes to D O B uh, yeah, all the plans wherever D O T comments are uh are applicable um sh- uh is consistently shown so that there is no misunderstanding in its, in the review at at D O B. Uh. Uh, s- on the B S A drawing one oh three, um, the area where the customer, so this is um going to the floor plan. Um. This is the first floor, uh, B S A plan, uh, one zero three. The area where the customers will be waiting and walking um to pick up their vehicles. Um, especially the area in front of stair one um up to the attendant booth. Now, that, I think we had mentioned it earlier on, but because we got so caught up with uh the Z R D one, it kind of got lost. So I want to pick it up and not get lost uh this time around. Uh, the, 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 a four-foot wide yellow strip, yellow striped pedestrian area should be provided from the stairway A all the way to the um uh attendant booth. Though, those are the areas where um the customers will be actually al- also to the, to the restroom. Um, where the customer will be waiting uh to pick up the vehicles and to pay. Um, so that should be uh marked out. Um, a four-foot strip um uh area should be marked out. And especially along the corner of the stair A where the vehicles will be turning. Provide bollards around that area so that it uh, it ensures that the vehicles uh while turning are are um stay away from that four-foot marker uh and the bollards will physically also pro- um ensure that uh safety separation. Um, I will, again, with regards to the street frontage, and I'd mentioned this at the first hearing, is that I you know, the applicant is proposing opaque windows. Um, and this frontage has a um, an elevated subway line. Um, I do not want the street frontage to appear uh somewhat dead and not having eyes and ears on the street. The fact that this building is being built, which kind of looks like it's occupied, yet it it's not visible from the street level um by any occupant other than cars. My recommendation would be in the interest of making the, livening the street frontage and make, and more importantly, making it safer and uh for pedestrians to walk by. My recommendation is that, uh, you, you know, and it's a very simple solution. Um, you ha- you are proposing scorned lights. Just provide scorned lights that are interesting. The, the lights can keep changing colors. So this kind of makes it a little bit activated, makes it uh look playful. Um, you can have different kinds of light that um, I, I'm not talking about strobe lights and things like that because I know there are restrictions in terms of regulations. Uh, but something that allows it to be somewhat active and makes it look not totally dead and nobody is paying attention to this frontage. So because of that, I'm just saying, do something to liven uh the appearance of it. Even if, let's say, you make the glass look interesting, something that is artistic. Uh, that might be more expensive, so that's why I'm suggesting a cheaper solution. Just use lights and these days there are so many different kinds of light solutions. So um that should be um considered by the applicant along the Park um McDonald Avenue frontage. Um, and as Ms. Benkey said, the curb extension and the proposed bu- bus stop, they should be incorporated into the plan set. Um, I, we received a separate plan. That should be incorporated into the plan set. Um, and as I mentioned, a letter of commitment. Um, and if needed, a restrictive deck should be provided by the applicant to memo- memorialize D O T conditions. So, uh, that was a long-winded one. Uh, Commissioner Otley Brown.
I have no additional questions.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I did read through the comments from D U T and um item number three in their review letter indicate that um, that the D U T or this is actually, uh, this is from Tracy, the D U T didn't review, the review unit did not take a look at the detailed site plan and they may provide additional comments. Is that something that we should be like waiting for?
They, they updated that they have no additional comments this morning.
Thank you. I have no further comments then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Shibeta.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair. I have no further comments.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Um, just give me a second. I'm, I'm just um finishing my notes. Okay, next case, please.
Item number forty five, twenty twenty eighty eight B Z, three fifteen Berry Street, Brooklyn.
I'm just scrolling through my notes. Okay, this application was last, last heard on February seventh. During this period, the applicant has been uh working with fire department to address fire department concerns. We have received a letter of no objection from fire department um last week, subject to recommendations that were set forth in the condition uh a letter of no objection. In addition, the board had asked the applicant for a Z R D one regarding permitted obstructions uh applicability to um the terminology would be stationary energy storage system, S E S S, as I was informed. Uh, D O B approved the Z R D one with conditions. And the uh Z R D one conditions are um as follows. That the proposed use group uh sixty S E S S facility um is permitted by B S A special permit seventy three sixteen and zoning resolution uh twenty two dash twenty one. No rooftop equipment shall be installed above sixty foot above the street line within the twenty-foot initial setback and no equipment shall penetrate sky exposure plane. Uh, need to comply with open space requirement of zoning resolution section twenty two dash twelve I. Need to comply with accessory power system and for non-accessory power system. And uh the facility on the roof level shall not be considered a floor no, shall not be considered a zoning floor area. And the system shall be reviewed and approved by fire department. So all in all, basically, what the, what D O B is saying, it has to comply with all the underlying zoning regulations. Um, except for the use. So um the, which is what it's before us. The applicant uh submitted a revised plan that responded to the fire department and prior board concerns. Um, the applicant has submitted its response to questions that were raised at the last hearing regarding E M F exposure from the system and the structural loading and structural integrity of the building. So with that, I kind of want to go through what this action, uh, what is this application for? What is it, why is it before us and what is it that the board needs to consider in its review? So please bear with me. I have a little bit of a lengthy uh uh read on this one. This is an application under section seventy three dash fourteen of the zoning resolution for a special permit to permit a use at the permit, uh, at the premises that is not permitted as of right in a residential district. Pursuant to zoning resolution section seventy three dash fourteen, that is relevant here. In any residential district, the B S A may permit the use of an electric utility substation limited in its area to no more than ten thousand square feet, provided the following findings are made. First, that the use will serve the residential area within which it is proposed to be located. That there, um, there aren't serious diffi- uh, there are serious difficulties locating it in a district. Whether it is permitted as of right and from which it could serve the residential area. Um, which makes it necessary to locate such use within a residential district. Second, in the case of uh such electric utility sub, utility substations, uh, the site for such use has a minimum lot area of four thou- for four thousand five hundred and square feet. So the application here, um, the applicant here is proposing the use of a um stationary energy uh storage system um or um best or S E S S or E S S, it goes by many names. Um, uh, use group sixty electricity, uh, electric utility substation at the premise located in an R six residential zoning district with a lot area of approximately fourteen thousand six hundred and eighty-three square feet. As such, the board may consider this application because it has a lot area that exceeds forty-five hundred square feet. The applicant uh represents that the proposed uh, that they propose the use to occupy approximately six thousand two hundred and thirty-nine square feet on a portion of a roof of the existing building located at the uh site. And of that about a portion would be on the ground floor and a portion would be on the roof of the building. As such, I find that the proposed use is limited in its area and it, and it shall not be more than ten thousand square feet. Um, that is the limit set in the special permit. So as a substantive finding, the applicant here represents the following. First, that the proposed ele- electricity utility substation at the site will serve the residential area in which it is proposed.
Hi, Vice Chair. I'm, I'm so sorry. Um, I'm so sorry to interrupt. I just want to jump in uh because you are going through the findings of seventy three fourteen as this application is filed under seventy three fourteen. Uh, earlier in your comments uh with respect to the D O B approved Z R D one, uh, you mentioned that it was approved with conditions and uh that Z R D one states that it is approved under seventy three sixteen.
Oh, yes, you're right. I'm sorry. Mine missed.
No, 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 no apologies. You did read that correctly. I'm reviewing the Z R D one right now. Uh, and this is something that I'd like to the board to flag for the applicant in the public hearing. Uh, this application is brought under seventy three fourteen. Uh, the Z R D one appears to have been approved with conditions under seventy three sixteen. Uh, whether it was filed under seventy three sixteen uh purposefully or maybe as a typo. Uh, this is something that the applicant will need to address because this application is not brought under seventy three sixteen. And the first condition of the D O B's approved Z R D one states that the proposed public utility substation use group sixty shall be permitted with a special per- use permit granted by the B S A per seventy three sixteen and Z R twenty two twenty one. The objection to which the applicant filed this application under is uh under seventy three fourteen. Uh, so again, uh, as you move through your comments addressing the findings under seventy three fourteen, I'd like the board to just note in the record to reflect that this application is brought under that provision. However, it seems that there is a disconnect in what the applicant may have filed and ru- had reviewed at the Department of Buildings with respect to this Z R D one. Whether or not an amended application under seventy three sixteen uh must be brought or whether uh this Z R D one must be refiled under the correct jurisdictional provision is something that the applicant should address. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. It's uh, you're absolutely right. Yes, uh, we are reviewing it under fourteen, seventy three fourteen.
And. Vice Chair, just to clarify, so you know, the application as filed, uh, presents this as a use group sixty.
Yeah.
Uh, under seventy three sixteen, it would be, I believe, a seventeen or something.
Right. Yep, yep, you're absolutely right. Thank you. Uh, that's a big flag. Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, should I move on to the findings associated with seventy three fourteen?
Yes, yes. I just wanted to make. Yes, yes. I just wanted to make make the record clear as to that distinction uh because that ZRD one, as you correctly stated, was approved under seventy-three sixteen.
Yeah.
This is an application under seventy-three fourteen and as your comments uh correctly indicate, uh please proceed with your comments under seventy-three fourteen.
Yeah, I think it's kind of, I think it seems like it's a typo because the applicant in its request did say seventy-three fourteen. Uh when when the applicant submitted the request, it does say um seventy-three fourteen. So somewhere um anyway, the applicant should should have it clarified from um DOB. As I'm going through the ZR uh ZRD one that was submitted. In in its applicant statement, it it refers to seventy-three fourteen. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Um so for the record, it needs to be clarified by the applicant. It's for the applicant to verify. Um so as I was saying, in terms of the finding, um the first set of finding is that the proposed electricity uh electric utility substation at the site will serve the residential area in which it is proposed. The site area is located in Conadiscence Waters uh Street Network, which is rep- uh is represented as the electricity grid that supplies energy to approximately three point five square mile of North Brooklyn and is among um the oldest, most vulnerable and congested networks. Uh the applicant represents that this network is most at risk of future brownouts and outages. Uh the proposed system at the site, uh the applicant represents will directly benefit the neighborhood by um A, reducing the incidence of electricity brownouts and outages in the electricity um uh network during increasingly frequent and extreme weather events. B, um that uh it be used to provide energy uh power for critical services during periods when the electricity network experiences um an actual failure. And C, directly um reduces the need to operate fossil fuel generated plants during daily periods of peak energy use, providing environmental benefits to all citizens in the community. And finally, four, uh that um provides a direct uh capital investment, job rents, energy cost reductions and other quality of life benefits to residents, landowners and businesses in the neighborhood where it is located. The second set of finding is that there is, there are serious difficulties in locating the proposed um electrocuted D substation in a district where it is permitted as of right and from which it could serve the uh residential area, which makes it necessary to locate at the subject site. The applicant represents that from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty uh microgrid network um had conducted an exhaustive search for leasable um properties uh with uh sufficient and suitable installation area and uh situated optimally in the Water Street Network for the interla- uh installation of uh BES or E S S or SES's system and willing to enter into a long-term lease required for the operation of such system. The qualification criteria for citing of the applicant's uh system includes that the uh that um the the ability to hold the heavy equipment, the ability to accommodate supple- sufficient energy storage capacity to be located in physical proximity to specific parts of the electricity network and availability to rent for a twenty-year term at a mutually acceptable rate. The applicant represents that over two hundred sites within the Water Street Network were surveyed and and that MGN had been able to secure only two um best sites uh site leases within the Water Street Network, which uh meet the necessary criteria. One of them, one of the site is two forty-three um uh Callier Street that is located in an M one one zoning district where such facility would be permitted as of right and the subject site and the subject site there uh is located in an R six and thus requires a special permit. So zoning resolution section seventy-three dash fourteen states the following. Uh in addition to meeting those findings, that the board may prescribe appropriate conditions or safeguards to minimize adverse effects on the character of the surrounding area, including requirements that electricity utility substations shall meet the performance standards for an M one district, that such electricity utility substations shall be surrounded with fences, barriers or other safety de- or other safety devices, or that any such use shall be landscaped. Throughout our record, we have received troubling testimony from very concerned tenants of the subject premise uh uh regarding um the structural stability of the site as it currently exists. With, which raises deeper concerns that the proposed facility installation will detrimentally exacerbate the stability of the building. There has been concerns and questions raised regarding the fire safety of the installation. Uh we also just received testimony from tenants requesting that we adjourn because the work uh the landlord has scheduled may cut internet uh from this uh for the site. Um I want to say this, is that we hear your concerns. However, the building safety concerns must be addressed with the Department of Buildings, fire safety with the fire department and landlord tenant issues are a private matter. The board is not, it is not within the purview of the board. Um the board has its review, has here is reviewing whether locating this use in a residential district can be done appropriately so as to not adversely affect the character of the residential area. And to that end, I find that the applicant has demonstrated in the record that they have made the findings under section seventy-three dash fourteen. Now, that being said, separately, I believe um some of my fellow commissioners shared the tenants' concerns, as I do, regarding the structural, structural integrity of this building and the fire safety of any proposed installation and the ability of the roof to adequately support and effectively drain the water from the required fire separation. Um the applicant also acknowledges that approvals of the proposed uh system are needed for the, from several agencies, including Department of Buildings, Office of Technical Certification and Research, Fire Department, DEP and DOT. So BSA is only considering the appropriateness of the use within uh or within and its effect on the character of the residential district. So the reason for saying that is that there are several other agencies that will have oversight on this case and will be uh reviewing this in thorough uh in a thorough manner. So while the concerns raised by the tenants uh do not go to the findings and uh should the commissioners like them to be addressed, they may be addressed through conditions of the board's resolution. Should we reach a favorable decision and those conditions could be addressed and resolved through oversight and enforcement by the appropriate sister agencies. So I would now like to hear from my fellow commissioners on the questions of the findings. Has the applicant met the findings of section seventy-three dash fourteen? Um I also want to remind all the listeners and the tenants who have sent us letters that they can participate um in the BSA hearing by using a telephone and a dial-in. They can send in letters. We have been reading all the letters, all the uh com- comment letters that we have received from the tenants and anybody who has sent any documentation has been shared by the commissioners. And I will ask um that at the end of our review session, Ms Matias uh read out the dial-in instruction now for the listeners to take note and be prepared in advance and we will also um um as we will also uh during the public hearing. So with that lengthy comment, uh let me first go to Commissioner Artley Brown. I want to hear from you all, all the commissioners as to whether the applicant has met the findings of section seventy-three fourteen and any recommendations of conditions you would want to consider. Thank you.
So I just want to start by saying that as this is a case of first impression to have this battery installation on top of a residential building, I s- I feel that this is actually crucial and really important for the um stability of the electronic grid in this area as well as the rest of New York City. It's of absolute importance that we have sufficient electrical energy stores to take us through periods of high demand in the summer. Nobody wants a blackout or even a brownout because the effects of that can be devastating and also threatening to human health. So that's primary in my mind as to whether or not the um applicant has met the findings of seventy-three fourteen. I feel that they have met the findings of seventy-three fourteen. However, I do feel um I feel sympathetic to the issues and the claims raised by the uh apartment dwellers of that building. I do feel a lot of that is uh civil are civil issues between landlord and tenant and I believe this board should remain neutral to that. And so um I'm at this point satisfied with the application and its current uh iteration and I feel that the oversight agencies of FDNY and DOB will in the future ensure the ongoing physical safety of the people in this building.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I I do, I do agree that we shouldn't, we shouldn't be involved in in like a dispute or or um tenant uh landlord issues. We should stay away from that. Uh but regarding regarding the projects, I do understand the um the concerns of the tenants. Uh however, I I do believe that the the project is essential. Uh any similar project actually would would be, would be essential to the um area where it's going to be located uh from electric loading perspective. Uh I'm gonna like defer to um you on the zoning uh issues on on whether uh the use is appropriate for for uh be located on top of a residential or not. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna focus on the um like the structural aspect and the engineering aspect, I would say, of of this proposal. Uh we we received like multiple submissions addressing the structural stability of the building. Uh however, the review of such uh submission or submissions are beyond uh the scope of this board. We don't have the the manpower, we don't have the the time and the resources to look at these uh submissions. Luckily, in this submission even, what we obtained, what was submitted to us is an engineering report from Mr Ian Locke. It's a report dated September fourteen. The report actually provided conclusions. Uh and 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 uh I believe the next step is for sister agencies like DOB to ask for details of these conclusions and and take a look at them and review them. At two main concerns that I I had during the past hearing, one of them is related to uh the structural stability and and let me clarify something. Maybe some people um like incorrectly got the impression that I'm concerned because of the impact of the proposed construction, meaning that the battery system. That wasn't the case. What I was concerned about is actually existing uh like deficiencies in the building as is regardless, whether they're gonna put that battery system or not. Good thing is, I have seen pictures for uh work in progress on site fixing these these deficiencies. I'm talking about the facade repairs, of course, and the cracks in the facade beams, which is, which is a good thing. Uh on the structural aspect, I, like I said, DOB should look at whatever is gonna be submitted to them and make sure that the building is is okay with or without the the battery system. This is, this should be one of the conditions. And the other issue is is that regarding the drainage and also we get conclusions on this. Uh so we would like, uh I would like to uh like impose another condition regarding the the adequacy of the drainage system that's existing, maybe if you need to add any drainage components. Uh DOB as well as fire department will need to uh take a look at these two issues, review the submissions and make sure that the building is okay structurally and make sure that the existing drainage system is sufficient and will 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 act properly during a fire and or a storm event. Other than that, I have nothing else to add. I I do have the two conditions. If you want me to read them, I could. If 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 you want me to save him and I can forward the two conditions to him, the council, that would be fine as well.
Yeah, do the latter. Um but I do want to go back um is, you know, what is before the board is the if the applicant has met the findings of section uh seventy-three fourteen. Can you please con- affirm whether the applicant has met the findings of the special permit?
I I do believe the bed, I I believe that the size of the facility meets the finding for the um uh special permit fourteen, not sixteen. Uh I I do believe that this facility is essential, like I said, not just to this neighborhood, to any other neighborhood that it might be located within that's in need for uh electric load stabilization to ensure that no blackout could happen or or might happen. So yes, I I do believe that we met the findings, but I wanted to like make it more clear that the review of the structural things and the drainage are beyond uh our scope.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um Commissioner Shibeta.
Uh thank you, Vice Chair. Um I wanna uh thank my colleagues for their remarks and I wanna um uh thank you, Vice Chair, to uh direct us exactly what the scope of our review is. And that is whether or not they, this applicant has met the findings in seventy-three fourteen and I don't, and I uh I think it's pretty clear that they have. With regard to the neighbors, again, that is a landlord-tenant dispute. Um and I think with regards to any safety concerns, as Commissioner Sheta stated, we do have our sister agencies that we that I believe all the commissioners have or soon to be all the commissioners have will uh have uh said that they should can, that they should address those concerns in a way to safeguard uh um the tenants of that, of the, of the um residents. Other than that, I have no further questions.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Yun.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um given that uh the su- the substantive hearings have all occurred prior to my appointment as a commissioner, I uh have no comments to add on this case.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Yeah, if if uh if during the hearing, if you want during the hearing or during even this uh review session, I'd like counsel to read the two conditions. So if one of my fellow commissioners believe that we should modify or add, uh that might be helpful as well.
We are, I I I think um I don't think we are ready to close on this, so that's why let's hold off on some of the conditions because we need to make sure, yes, counsel, General Counsel Fine?
Uh I, thank you. I was just going to say, uh I believe that we still have open seeker on this application.
Uh I was gonna, okay, so we have.
So um i- if if, you know, we've heard from all the board members um uh when we have a closed seeker and the board is prepared to make a motion to close, we can discuss any appropriate conditions that the board would like uh included.
Yeah.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, uh Councilman, uh General Counsel Fine. Um okay, so let's go to the next case.
Oh, I thought you wanted me to read the call-in number. Steve, do you want to put the screen up?
Yes, please.
Steve, do you want to put the screen up?
Yes, thanks.
And just note for the public that we are still in the review session. We will not be accepting any public testimony at this time. Uh but if you are tuned in to the review session, uh we will be, thank you, uh sharing our dial-in information uh for when this case is called in the public hearing. Uh this is the information that you will use to participate in the hearing, uh either by uh Zoom or dial-in telephone and uh Ms Matias, if you would like to read it. Thank you.
Sure. The dial-in number is six four six five five eight eight six five six. You will enter the webinar ID number is eight seven eight one two one three 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 one. You will press the pound sign. After that, the second prompt, you will press the pound sign. If you're in the Zoom, it's press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you're on the phone. Okay, and if, when you come to the hearing, if you're in the Zoom room, you'll raise your Zoom hand. But that's for the public here. Uh there's also a toll-free number if someone's out of the city, one eight Uh, there's also a toll-free number if someone's out of the city, one eight eight four seven five four four nine nine, that's a toll-free number, should someone be out of the New York area calling in.
Thank you, Ms. Matias, that was very helpful, thank you.
Okay. Um, so we have one more case for the, uh, review session?
Mm-hmm.
So then it's new case, item number forty-six, twenty-twenty-two thirty-one BZ, three thirty-seven E sixty-fourth Street, Manhattan. Is a variance to permit the conversion and enlargement of an existing building to facilitate a youth group three school, the Browning School, contrary to the underlying rear yard and height regulation.
Okay, thank you. We have received proof of service of initial filing and proof of hearing, community board has voted to approve. We received a, a letter of support. Um, as mentioned, this is an application pursuant to zoning resolution section seventy-two dash twenty-one to waive rear yard and height and setback regulations for the conversion and, and enlargement of an existing building to facilitate, um, a school. Um, specifically, um, this is an, um, existing building which has been operating since over hundred years. Yeah, and, uh, this is currently being used as a public parking garage and a auto repair, uh, place. Um, the building is a, a non, um, complying building. It has, uh, it has a rear yard, a depth of nine foot eleven inches. Um, it has a street wall height which is complying, uh, sixty-four feet, uh, per, uh, R eight, uh, B zoning regulation. Um, the applicant is proposing to convert and enlarge the existing garage building to facilitate, um, the school um, for, uh, the Browns, Browning School, um, to relocate, uh, its, uh, upper schools, grades nine through twelve to the subject site. Um, so there'll be a proposed addition of about eight thousand seven hundred square feet. And, um, the proposed enlargement will maintain the existing floor structure, slabs, beams, girders, and, uh, the exterior wall. Uh, it will be a five-story plus cellar. The existing building is a five-story cellar building, so it will maintain a five-story plus cellar, cellar plus a mezzanine above the fifth floor. The increase in height is to allow, um, a complying NFSH, uh, uh, complying basketball court uh, with a clearance height of twenty-five feet. The vertical extension of the fifth floor, um, though, is set back from the street line by about fifteen feet. And the street wall height will remain sixty-four feet. The building height will increase from sixty-four to eighty-three feet to up to the bulkhead ninety-four feet. The maximum permitted building height in an R eight B district is seventy-five feet. So the proposed increase of about eight plus feet is modest. Uh, the building footprint, uh, remains unchanged, except for the additional stair bulkhead in the rear. Um, the existing building has an exterior fire escape. The applicant is proposing to basically enclose the, uh, fire exit and, uh, it will result in an, um, encroachment into the rear yard, an additional, uh, non-compliance, uh, above the height of second floor. Um, is so in the existing proposed and the as of right, uh, plans that the applicant showed, it shows that the permitted yard depth and, um, okay, I'm sorry, I'm misreading my own notes, this is what happens. Um, so what I would like the applicant, uh, to do first, before I go through each one of the findings, is just to make it easier um, and to clarify for the future board, also, future boards, when, uh, and if they have to review this case, is to identify both in the as of right, existing and proposed, the required set of, um, uh, rear yards, height and setback envelope, uh, drawings and demarcate that in the, specifically in the proposed one to show where the area of, uh, non-compliance there is with regards to rear yard and setback. Um, this would, and this should be carried through, uh, with, in all the floors and the elevation. I know the applicant submitted in the neighborhood character analysis a three-D diagram, which was very helpful, but somehow that, that needs to be transposed into a black and white kind of a hatching, uh, way to show the areas, um, of, of the floor plan and the section and elevation that is encroaching into the uh, requirements. So with that, let me, uh, start with the findings under zoning resolution seventy-three twenty-one, seventy-two twenty-one, I'm sorry. Um, this, uh, there's a Cornell deference that is applicable here, so the applicant needs to justify its programmatic need. Um, I have to say, um, this is a very, very thorough programmatic need doc, uh, and documents that I have reviewed and, uh, very convincing. There, there is, there are existing schools that is in the, in the vicinity, the applicant wanted to, uh, and the existing facility cannot contain all its operation and it is undersized and it's not serving all the needs, uh, that the school, um, uh, endeavors and has been renting places for some of its activity spaces. So the proposal and it, and also has not been able to, uh, increase is, um, enrollment because of that space limitation. So the applicant is proposing to relocate its upper schools nine through twelve and provide a, uh, uh, complying gym facility. Then they don't have to rent the facility and, and have the ability to have, uh, more classrooms and increase the, uh, enrollment capacity. So I'm very satisfied with the programmatic need, I really have no comments, extremely satisfied with, with it. Maybe this can be a sample that we use. Uh, in terms of, uh, finding B is not applicable, finding C, which is neighborhood character, the proposed enlargement at the rear yard and the extension of the fifth floor are not much out of character with the build context, the existing block has shallow rear yards. The proposed staircase is, stairway is a replacement of an existing, uh, exterior fire staircase, um, except that it will be enclosed. The surrounding build context is a mix of apartment buildings ranging in heights, um, in both avenues and in the mid-blocks from two hundred to sixty-three feet. Um, there is also a Con Ed, a transformer station across the street. The proposed, uh, increase, um, the proposed increase also retains the existing street wall height and sets the building back additionally by fifteen feet, as required along narrow streets. So, um, uh, I, I think the applicant has been very thoughtful, uh, in its, uh, placement of the increased bulk and it further, it retains the intent of the contextual built form also. And I have to say, I'm really happy to see that the applicant's retaining the existing facade. It is a beautiful facade and, and though it's not landmarked, it, it is part of the, that neighborhood history. So it's nice to see that being retained. Um, though I haven't request, and that is, can the elevator bulkhead be reduced? Can the stair structure facing sixty-fourth Street be made of a lighter material to reduce the appearance of the bulk? And I'm saying this because I did not see a rendering, so I do not know what kind of material treatment, um, there would be along, uh, for that elevator and the stair bulkhead. This is to, uh, make it appear lighter, uh, along that frontage, that's the reason I'm asking that question. Um, so I would request that the applicant provide a rendering of the facade, preferably an axonometric. Um, now, um, with regards to the outdoor area in the rear yard, uh, and on the mezzanine, uh, I want to know what is the nature of the use. Uh, I know the outdoor area in the cellar would be for outdoor dining only, but it's not clear what the outdoor area on the mezzanine would be used for. Uh, since the building is abutting rear yards, um, at the cellar area um, and also the mezzanine, um, uh, roof area is abutting residential windows and homes across on the east side, um, there should be, um, adequate noise attenuation along both, uh, of these open areas. And I believe, uh, a revised noise analysis was submitted to that effect. Um, similarly, um, you know, if the mezzanine roof, it's going to be accessible by the students or not, it's not clear, but I think just, um, should there be any change in the programming and there's no need for the applicant to come back? Applicants just proactively take the necessary measure to, uh, attenuate the noise at the mezzanine level and programmatically use it, uh, in a manner that will not be an encumbrance um, or a nuisance to the residential, uh, neighbor. Um, also, there, there shall be no outdoor sign, sound devices permitted in these two open areas. A note should be added to that effect in the plan. Um, with regards to finding, um, D, uh, just for the record, applicant should provide an ownership chart of the abutting properties. I know it's not, but just for the record, it should be, that is part of the finding. And as I mentioned, with regards to finding E, the ask is minimal, I'm very, um, satisfied with the application as a whole. Um, school safety said it would not provide any comments since the total number of, uh, the capacity would be less than two hundred students. Um, with regards to SECR, I would like Ms. Benke to clarify if there is any update that we need to know about.
Sure. Um, we received the work plan and has regarding hazmat and it was sent to DEP this week. Um, air quality was sent for, for DEP review, we're waiting a response. And we received, uh, the updated noise analysis as you, as you noted, um, which was also sent to DEP. And, uh, the applicant will have to clarify because I don't think any noise attenuation was proposed um, beyond what the building requires, uh, or already has, so they can explain that. And DOT, we, the applicant responded and we are still waiting for DOT's review and comment on that.
And, um, there also is going to be, there's also going to be a bus drop-off area, so that, um, that's a DOT review, right? Uh, has DOT okay, has okayed that?
Um, I'll have to look at the comments.
Yeah, I, I think the existing curb cut is going to be removed and it's going to be replaced with a bus drop-off, uh, school bus drop-off zone for about a sixty-foot depth. So we need, um, just a sign off from DOT on that.
Okay.
Um, okay, Commissioner Otley Brown.
Hi, um, I agree with you that this is a very thorough application. I think it was very clear to me why they needed to extend the building upwards and provide for a mezzanine and a higher floor-to-ceiling height so that they could actually put a league-certified gymnasium on that top floor. We've actually seen that in various other school cases for schools that are located in Manhattan where space is at a premium and it's often very difficult to locate the proper athletic facilities so that the young people can participate in the, um, athletic leagues that serve the private schools and even the charter schools and public schools. So I think they did a good job in explaining that the construction of the building is such that if you want to keep the building but relocate the floor to floors, uh, the floor slabs, it would be far too costly for them to do that. And, you know, maybe a private school, but all schools are on a budget and so I'm very sympathetic to that argument. Um, I really don't have any major questions about this case. I thought that they, um, definitely showed through the C finding that this was not going to have a negative effect on the surrounding neighborhood. Um, I think they're cognizant of the fact that there is a cancer se- uh, center directly to the west of them and they're going to be careful to ensure that the young people don't interrupt the operations or cause distress to any of the patients that are visiting that center. Um, there's just one issue that I have, which is one that you had already mentioned, which is the outdoor area in the rear and the discrepancy between the statement of facts and findings, which calls this a quiet space, which is going to be used for like homework, studying, quiet activity and the plans, which call it outdoor dining adjacent to the cafeteria. And if anybody knows teenage boys, they are not quiet when they're not in class being told to be quiet. And so therefore, if they want to keep it as outdoor dining, they really have to be careful to make sure that there's appropriate sound attenuation on that terrace to protect the residences that are directly behind the building.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Vice Chair, I want to start with seconding, uh, one of your comments regarding showing the areas where the requested waivers, um, should be, um, on the plans, that would be very helpful for us and, and also for any future review. So this is one of, of the comments I had. I want to thank the architect and in general the applicant, that the applicant is really, uh, very thorough and, and, and it was like a, a pleasure to review something like that. Uh, the architect actually did, uh, something that showed that he's, he's a proactive person and he answered, uh, one of the questions before it's raised and that's how we cut the review time of the board. When he discussed the, um, like the applicability of, uh, tweaking or adjusting the floor heights by relocating, uh, the floor decks. Uh, he concluded that this would be a very complicated structural project. I would agree with him and, 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 and I thank him for why he did. Uh, I would ask them to show the call-outs and the orientations uh, for all the sections and elevations on the plans. Uh, this is, this is the only, um, comment I have.
Can you repeat that? Sorry, can you repeat that?
Show the call-outs and the orientations of the sections slash elevation views on the plans, because when it says section one, when you look at the plan, there is no call-out for section one. So that need to be there. I would advise them, uh, because the building is now a seven-story building and I don't see significant lateral road, load-resistant system, I would urge the architect to have a discussion with the structure engineer on that aspect. Uh, it, the building is, is now getting like almost ten feet taller. They need to check the, uh, that, that, like the lateral loading, uh, resisting system. Uh, and of course, uh, we're gonna put a condition at the end, if we grant this, that the structure integrity of the building need to be checked for the future use. That's all what I have for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I'm just taking your notes, I'm writing it down. Um, Commissioner Shibata?
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair. Um, I, uh, I, I believe that this meets the findings. I, and largely in part, the programmatic needs, uh, statement was, um, very telling, uh, it is clear that this is something that the school needs. Uh, I do have, uh, I, I also had that similar comment with regard to the outdoor area. But other than that, I think this was a, a really, uh, thorough and, and just very well put together application uh, that is convincing and I'm satisfied with it upon learning of how they intend to use that outdoor space.
Thank you, Commissioner Yun?
Thank you, I agree with all the comments that have been made and, um, I agree that this was a very thorough and, uh, diagrammatic and illustrative application and thank the applicant.
Thank you. Um, do you want, does every, any, do you want to go on to, uh, public hearing or want to take a five-minute break? And then we, five-minute break, okay? A five-minute break and we come back, uh, oh, sorry, yes, Ms. Matias?
So we're gonna take a five-minute break?
Yeah, we are done with the review session, let's take a five-minute break before we move to the public hearing. And if you want to, before we wrap it up, if you can again remind everybody how to dial in and sign in, um, and then we can take the five-minute break.
Okay, so this concludes the public review session, we'll commence with the public hearing and after our break. So, uh, Steve, could you put the screen back up? I'd appreciate that, thank you. So if you, uh, during the public hearing, if you wish to call in on a specific case and only your case, six four six five five eight eight six five six and to webinar ID number eight seven eight one two one three, 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 one, press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're in, you can press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you are on the phone. If you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand, which is a small hand, um, on your screen, on the bottom of your screen. Um, please call in after the board opens up the record for the public, okay?
And if anybody's calling from outside, the state?
Oh, I'm sorry, outside the state, yes, it's one eight eight four seven five four four nine nine, that's a United States toll-free number.
Thank you, in five minutes, we shall re- resume, it's eleven thirty-one, so we will, uh, resume in eleven thirty-six.
Okay.
Thank you. Please return. We went slightly over thirty six.
Okay. Okay, good morning. We're back on the record. This is the Border Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for October fourth, twenty twenty two. We will commence with the new special order cases, new calendar, special order calendar, new cases. First item is item number thirty seven, one twenty nine ninety seven B Z, one fifty sixty five Cross Island Parkway, Queens.
I think uh this would be Sandy. Yes, yeah, Sandy.
Oh, I don't see her.
I see, I I see her.
Okay, sorry, I just moved up. Panelists.
Good morning, Sandy Agnostu, representing the applicant, and I'm joined by the property owner and operator of the um business, Louis Romano. I believe he's in the wait room. The waiting room. Uh, he's calling from his phone, I think, nine one seven four one eight five.
Luigi Romano, yeah, we see it.
Luigi Romano.
Yes, good, good morning. How are you?
Okay, can you uh turn on your video?
I'm sorry, yes, give me one second.
Okay.
Is it on? Okay, there you go.
We can see you. Thank you. Okay, um, that's it, Sandy? That's the only two people?
Yes.
Okay, raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Okay, please proceed, Ms. Agnostu.
So I um made note of the comments that were made during the review session earlier this morning. Um, regarding continuous use, we will be submitting Google Street View photographs from twenty eighteen, when the previous term expired, to the present. Um, additionally, we'll be submitting a compliance chart with um evidence of compliance for each condition. Um, the sign analysis, I believe what we submitted was for one street, so being that this is a corner site, we will submit a revised sign analysis uh with all the signage for both um locations. Um, there are some notations on our proposed plans which need to be corrected um regarding um proposed canopy and wall. There's nothing proposed. We're just extending the term. So uh as the Vice Chair pointed out, these should be corrected to state that they're existing and we will also provide photographs of the interior of the building and the entire perimeter of the site. Um. Regarding the lumen analysis, um, we're in agreement that there, this um site does not impact uh residential uses along the rear lot line, but we will confirm this and provide photos of that area and also um update our statement to include this uh due to the site topography and that there is no lighting existing along the rear lot line. Um, we don't believe that there is any impact. Um, regarding Commissioner Sheta's comments, there are five dry wells on the site. Um, so Mr. Romano will take the video and photographs showing that these are working properly and actually maybe even today while it's raining. Um, and we'll submit that as well as revise our plans to show the locations of these. Um, if you want to speak to that, Luigi.
Yeah, I mean, the the dry, the dry, all the water from the property drains into the dry wells. We have two in front of the convenience store. And don't quote me a hundred percent. It's either two or three in the parking area where the coin operated air is. So all the water from the property drains onto the dry wells.
You mean, you mean into the floor drains, not the dry wood. Uh ultimately, it goes through the dry wells. But what I, what I asked for is is uh some videos for the floor drains.
We have no floor drains.
The oven thinks that on the, in the asphalt.
Yes, yes.
Water goes to.
Yes, those are, those are the tops of the dry wells. That's the top drain. That's the top cap for the drywall. All the water goes to that, and then they go into the drywalls.
Okay. If you can provide some videos for that.
Yeah, I can send you a picture of all the, I'll send you a picture of all the caps and I was, and if it's raining when I get back to the location, I'll take a, I'll take video of the rainwater going into the drywall is not a problem.
Um, um, Mr. Romano, you also mentioned that there are uh uh mis- coin operated machines. Uh, what, what kind of machines are these?
Air for the tires.
Okay, all right. Uh, do you also have any vacuum cleaner? Airbags? Okay, so uh Ms. Agnastos, please indicate those machines uh on the plan.
Sure. Um, so also regarding Commissioner Yun's um concerns regarding a commercial truck on the site. That actually was a truck that was on um on the site awaiting repairs. I believe the windshield had to be replaced and the actual part had to be ordered, which was done this past weekend. Um, so Mr. Romano, would you like to address that?
The, we don't leave, we don't rent out any type of parking or anything like that. The only thing, the only cars that are left on site is if the cars were not picked up on time by the customers or the, we're waiting parts to finish the repair. Nothing gets stored overnight. There's no, we don't, we don't have any storage at all for any cars. We don't, we keep the site clean of debris and all that. Community Board Seven's aware of that. They, when we spoke to them, they, they know that we don't have any overnight parking whatsoever.
And and there was also an advertising sign uh located on along the fence.
On on the fence line towards the corner. That's one of my customers. He's, as you know, he comes in, we fix the cars, he buys fuel by us, they get coffee in the convenience store. He asked me if I could put up a sign to help him promote his business. So we put it up out of no, you know, no, no harm, no foul. There's no charge for it. I just did it out of goodness of my own heart as a, you know, to try to help the guy with his business.
Um, that's very nice of you. Unfortunately, that's not permitted by zoning.
That's fine, we'll take it down.
So take it down. Maybe you can have some handouts in your uh convenience store and.
Yeah, I can do that. That's fine. I'll put a flyer on the inside. I'll put something on the inside of the store for him for like, you know, business cards or something, and I'll take, I'll take the banners down. That's not a problem.
Yeah, it's, i- i- it has to be complying with the regulations.
No problem, no problem.
Thank you.
And um, there's also a small stack of tires on the west side of the property that should be removed and then we need to submit photographs after that's cleaned up.
Tires are waste. Those are not, those they come by once a week and pick up. And we put them in the corner next to the garbage dumpsters so that they get thrown away. They're a waste. They're not, they're not new tires. It's old tires that we pay for people to pick up that we get a receipt for by New York State law that we have to dispose of.
Okay, um. You um and where it is kept uh in front of the Cross Island Parkway, along the front edge of Cross Island or now close to the trash enclosure?
It's, it's right on next to the trash enclosure. We have the the trash dumpster and then it's right next to it.
Okay, uh, well, when you, when the site photos are provided, we will know where they are. Um, but, and there isn't any way to put that inside the trash enclosure?
No, because the trash enclosures are, it's, it's a metal dumpster. It's recyclable. These are not recyclable, so you can't put them there because sanitation will give us a summons.
Oh, okay.
It has, we have to separate now. Cardboard has to be in one in trash enclosure, regular garbage in another, and this is tires. They wouldn't fall under the debris. And if sanitation caught that in and us, us not recycling correctly, we will get a violation.
Okay. All right, um, so yeah, do provide the site photos as long as it's not in the line of sight from the street in this case, um, and from the neighbors, and it is kept in a very discreet area that is not visible. Um, clearly, I I think maybe that's what, and you have no place to put that also inside the lube.
No, I wouldn't be able to, I can't store them inside because of the fire department won't allow it to store them inside. Because they're flammable, because it's rubber, it could burn. So where we have them stored, the neighbors.
But you can store, you can store new tires inside the building, but you're saying used tires.
But used tires, you're not, used tires, you're not allowed to store because of the, the chemical, once the air or people put fix a flat or something in there, they taint it on the inside, so we're not allowed to store them indoors. New tires don't have any chemicals in them, so we can store those indoors.
How often do you uh, um, how often do they, do you dispose of these tires?
Every Friday, I believe, or Saturday, the guy comes and picks them up. It comes once a week.
Do receipts?
Yeah, the guy, I'm sorry. Yes, we do get receipts from him, of course.
And is there, you can do that to make it uh um a little less of an eyesore?
Um, I can try to uh, I'm trying to think where I, I gotta, I gotta see what I, where I can put them, maybe closer to the buil- I mean, wherever they, where they are now, the only people that see it is us. We don't, it's not there's no residential home next to it. It's not visible from any of the residential. It's visible from the adjacent property, which is ours. So it's not visible from anybody else but our property. I can try to move them to the opposite side of where the dumpsters are. I'll have my guys move them tomorrow and we'll put them on the other side, so you only will see them if you're in the parking lot. And if you're driving on the service road, you won't see them, if that'll help.
Now, realistically speaking, how many tires get collected on an average week uh by Friday?
Thirty? Give or take?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um.
I'll just, I'll just say that when I, when I saw the tire, I have a photo of the tires next to the chimney roofing truck, which is next to the vacuum um and air stations. And those seem to be along Cross Island Parkway. So if you can move them, I, I know that there's a grade change, so it's not like you're looking directly past the chain link fence on Cross Island, but if you can move them further into the site along that side, uh lot line, then there wouldn't be any chance of them being visible through the chain link fence on the service road.
Fine, I'll move them to the opposite side, so you won't see them from the service road. You'll only see them if you're in the parking lot. That's no problem.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Right, another way would be you have two tandem parking, where the employee far parking spaces are four of them. Maybe uh you can move one of the cars in front and put the tires more towards the back. That way also it won't be visible um unless you go behind the cars.
Yep, that's exactly where I'm gonna move them to that side.
Okay, great. Okay, so you can make those changes and then when you provide the site photos, it would reflect those changes.
Correct.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Um, I really appreciate it, um, like thinking on the spot and coming up with solutions. Appreciate that.
Well, that's no problem.
Okay, um, any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Chase has a stand up.
Yes, again, I'm not able to see the screen, so sorry, uh, General Counsel Vine, go ahead.
Thank you, Board. Um, if, since the Board's been discussing the uh maintenance of the site with respect to the tires, uh, would the Board like an operational plan uh that can then be included in any approval and then And then provide a level of expectation to the community and board and allow the board to enforce with respect to the location and pickups of tires?
Sure, yes. Ms. Agnastos, please provide a letter stating the operation plan with regards to the maintenance of the site and specifically how the tire pickup and storage is going to be contained.
Sure.
Okay, that, thank you. Thank for the suggestion. Let's go, if there aren't any other questions or comments, let's go to the public. And I think Chief Daly, you, do you have something to say? Okay, let's go to the public then.
The case we are currently discussing is 12997BZ, 15065 Cross Island Parkway, Queens. This is an extension of term of an automotive service station. Should you wish to discuss, dial in 6465588656 and to webinar ID number 87812133331 and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign. Once you are in, press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute the phone. If you're in the Zoom room, you can raise your hand, your Zoom hand, which is the Zoom hand on the lower hand, the lower part of your computer screen. And you may also call in using a toll free number 1884754499 and follow the same prompts by putting in the webinar ID number and the pound sign.
Okay, while we are waiting for anybody to call in. Ms. Agnastos, do you, how long will it take for you to make these corrections?
I would say a month. It's not much, but a month is plenty of time for us to address every item.
Okay, alright. So maybe a December hearing.
Yes.
Okay.
We're waiting, I will say to Mr. Romano's credit that the site was in very good condition and looks to be very well maintained, otherwise, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, thank you. So just while we are waiting, so as you mentioned, continuous use, Google Street View, compliance chart, revise the site plan, indicate the location of the airbag, the drainage, remove the proposed notations and provide basically the location of the tire that's going to be stored. You can also indicate that in the plan and revise signage. And then an operational plan with regards to how the pickup and maintenance of the site is being done. Did I miss out anything?
No, video of the drain.
Oh, yes, and the video, video, video of the drainage system. Yes, thank you, thank you. Alright.
We're done. Oh, John, you wanted to say something? Sorry, fire department.
I, yeah, Madam Vice Chair, you talked about continuity for the site. The fire department does conduct inspections every year at this location. And we comply, provide our information to the applicant's record for submission to VSA if they need any additional information or continuity.
Yeah, thank you. That would be very helpful. Thank you very much. But I think this site, you know, it's, that can be good for the record, definitely. Because that shows the site is safe and, and has been monitored. That can also be part of the continuity. So I leave it up to the applicant as to how they want to submit the information. Yeah.
The applicant, she has my email.
Yes.
I could provide that information.
I will reach out to Chief Daly. I appreciate it. That will be very helpful and we'll include it in our submission. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Very helpful. Thank you very much.
Okay.
We're done. Yes, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Item number 3877957BZ, 13725 Jamaica Avenue, Queens, has been postponed. As previously stated, the next item is item number 3934875BZ, 1050 Forest Avenue, Staten Island.
Okay. Is this Ms. Foladair?
Yep.
Hi, how are you?
Hi. Anyone with you?
Uh, no, I didn't think that we needed anyone else.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do, thank you. Elise Foladair from Eric Palatnik PC. I also wanted to let Commissioner Brown know that I have a dog and I had the same experience. So I had to wait outside. They did not let me in to go to the vet. And since this is a residential neighborhood at the community board meeting, a residential neighbor next door was concerned because too many people were outside talking with all their dogs. But that has been, I, and I hope, I don't go there, but I know it's been significantly resolved because now there are four waiting rooms and people can actually go inside. So hopefully that neighbor is way happier than before. And, you know, as you stated, it was a rock and a hard place because it's a residential neighborhood. And then I have one more question. I'm just point, putting this out there. The, the vet who operates there is either in his late seventies or early eighties. He's been there for 40 years and wanted me to ask if there's a chance that they could get more than a 10-year extension because they've been there for so long. If you're not open to it, we also understand. We just wanted to ask if it was a possibility.
This is a question for our executive director. Are we, remind me, are we allowed to do more than 10?
It's not a pre-61.
It's not a pre-61. Yeah, it's a variance. It's not a special permit.
Yeah, so it doesn't have that condition.
It doesn't have that condition, so we can't.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, yeah, the, the term is at the board's discretion.
Okay. So this is a question for the commissioners. What do you think? Would you be okay, amenable to a 20-year? I hear Commissioner, C Commissioner Shabeta agreeing to 20, Commissioner Hartley Brown agreeing to 20, Commissioner Yun agreeing to 20, Commissioner Shetta. So yes, we would be.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I think the, the, this has been a good neighbor. They have been responsive to all the community concerns that were raised recently. And the operation, nobody had any issues about the operation other than whatever happened during the COVID period and that is being addressed now. So, okay, let's, any questions for, from the commissioner? Okay, let's go to the public, please.
The case we are currently discussing is 34875BZ, 1050 Forest Avenue, Staten Island. This is an extension of term for a animal hospital with an accessory caretaker's apartment, which expired April 3rd, 2022. Should you wish to discuss, please dial in 646558865, sorry, 8656. Or you can dial the toll free number, which is 1884754499. You will enter the webinar ID number 87812133331 and press, and pound sign. At the second, at the next prompt, you will press the pound sign. Once you're in, you press star nine to raise your hand to speak and star, press six, star six to unmute if you are calling in. If you're already in the Zoom room and wish to speak on this case only, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand on the bottom of your screen.
Okay. We really have no submission on this one. So I, you know, let's wait for anybody to call in. But unless there are any issues that gets raised, I would make a recommendation that we close this application. Have we almost there?
Yeah, just give it a minute, minutes, few seconds, sorry.
I like yellow alarm.
Alright, motion to close.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Hi.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Hi.
Commissioner Shetta?
Hi.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Hi.
Commissioner Yun?
Hi.
Thank you. Okay, we will let you know as to when it's going to be scheduled for decision.
No problem there. Okay, operational, so it's whatever works for you.
Yeah, thank you.
Item number 461780BZ, 77780 McDonald Avenue, Brooklyn.
Just me again. It's a holiday for.
Yeah.
Owner, so apologize that he cannot be here.
Okay, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do, thank you.
Okay, proceed.
Okay, Elise Foladair from Eric Palatnik PC. I'm gonna go through the questions and answer them as best as possible. And then whatever I can answer, we'll get back to you in writing because the owner is preparing for the holiday. So yes, the number of parking spaces is the same. It's 21 spots. We can clarify that in writing. And it remains the same. Nothing's been changed on that. Your next question was about the outdoor refrigerated trash enclosure area in the zoning lot. The trash is taken to that area on that other lot. It is a different zoning lot. We can provide an explanation more detailed about that if that helps, but it is not on our lot.
Uh, okay, so then you need to include it in the plan as to where trash enclosure is located. I would prefer, i- is it on the same block?
It's on, it's next door and it's the same owner.
I see. Oh, and so this is fronting on the other street. It's, what is the street frontage? The other street frontage?
Day Hill or?
Ditmas, is it on?
Ditmas, I believe so, but I can, we can clarify.
He, okay, so this was fronting on Ditmas, behind that existing one-story building that is blue painted.
Yeah.
Okay, so you do need to show it in the site plan as to where trash enclosure is located and give it a lot, block and lot number on that one. And in your statement of, statement of fact, sorry, do specify as to where it is and if, and provide.
My guess is, sorry, I should clarify that in the notice of comments. We explained that trash is kept downstairs and it is, and it's just taken out before trash comes.
I see. So, but, but the outside one is a refrigerated trash enclosure. So you do not have a refrigerated trash enclosure inside the building?
I do not believe so, but I would like to get more clarification on if there's any refrigerated trash necessary. I know they take it out immediately after. They keep it downstairs where they showed you in the notice of comments. And then they take it out right before it comes and then it's picked up by the carving company.
Can I just take a quick break for just for two minutes? Sorry, I have to attend to one call very quickly that just came in. Just give me a quick break.
Okay, no problem.
Alright.
Do you want to mute, vice chair?
My sincere apologies. My sincere apologies. Please continue.
Back on the record, go ahead.
Hi, Elise Foladair, Eric Palatnik PC, just in case you need that. I can show you if you'd like me to share my screen, what we do, or I can just try to hopefully explain better in a submission, but yeah.
You can show us what you, you, you can show us what it is. Just that my concern is that if you're going to store the trash, refrigerated trash outside, then it's going to be there for some time. It's not just there for pickup.
They don't, they don't, as far as I know, talking from the, talking to the owner today, they don't store refrigerated trash outside. They immediately take it from the, after an event, from the area in the basement, which I'll share. And then they take it outside. And then we provided a carding contract to show that it's picked up that evening.
Okay, so do provide an operational plan?
Yeah, so maybe that'll help clarify.
Let, yeah, a letter indicating how the pickup and storage is being handled on the subject side and the abutting side, even though it may be under the same ownership, but we do need to know that very clearly and indicated in the plan.
And the, okay.
I don't know the way the garbage is stored there, if that is, Fire Department seems like it's blocking the fire exit. So please be careful of what you show.
Okay, no problem. I will discuss that with them.
I, 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 my main concern is I, I don't want it, if, if the pickup is happening every day and the, whatever trash is collected is being put in that egress area and it's not going through any other property, there is a direct door that connects it there. Indicate that and clarify that in the plan and in your statement and your operational plan.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Okay, and then the signage that was pointed out, we can provide a signage analysis form, no problem. And then we do not know of any complaints from neighbors. The site is operational. As Commissioner Yun pointed out, it wasn't during COVID. It's been operational a couple of months. And we can add that to the operational plan that you just suggested as well. And then last, we spoke about the barbed wire. There is no barb, there's only barbed wire on Day Hill Road because there's been historical issue, safety issues, because you, it's like a flat roof and you can climb onto the other roof. And people were climbing onto their roof to steal like AC units and different things. And that was historically a problem, but there is no barbed wire around McDonald's, which is where the fire department access would be from unless the fire department has otherwise comment.
Okay, alright, um. Alright, um, any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Okay, let's go to the public and start off with, maybe let's talk to Chief Daly first here from Chief Daly and then go to the public.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I will have to conduct an inspection at the site and prepare a report and provide it to the board of what our position would be with respect to this barbed wire. So I'll probably have that report to you. So I'll probably have that report to you in the past few, uh, two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um. Uh, let's go to the public.
The case we are currently discussing is six seventeen eighty BZ seven seventy-seven eighty McDonald Avenue, Brooklyn. Should you wish to call in, oh, thank you for fixing that. You may dial in six four six five five eight eight six five six or our toll-free number one eight eight four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter the webinar ID number eight seven eight one two one three 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 one and the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign. Uh, when you're in, press star nine to raise your hand, press star six to unmute if you're calling in. And if you are in the Zoom room already and wish to speak, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your screen.
Um, um, so Ms. Florida, uh, sorry, Ms. Um, it was a tongue twister, I was so that's what happened, uh, Ms. Fulladair, um, just what is the issue with DOT and PDC?
Uh, there was a fence that was, uh, in the last condition that needed to be approved by DOT and it had, uh, the last, last week, yeah, I'm like, what day is it, it's Tuesday. It wa- that DOT hearing was closed and it was final approval.
Ah, okay, so it's that fence on McDonald Avenue because
Yeah. And it was noted in the last resolution, so that was one of the conditions, so we took care of that before we got here.
Great, thank you, so you will update the statement of fact accordingly?
Yeah, no problem.
And, and also the green, I guess both are in the, on city sidewalk, that's the reason why they were Okay.
Okay, we're clear.
Okay, uh, how much time will you need to make these changes?
Um, since he needs two weeks anyway, I would say two or I guess another week on whatever, uh, Chief Inspector Daly advises us to do, we'll have to do that. So give us another week after him, just in case he has any recommendations.
So should we just say one month?
Yeah, that's no problem.
Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. We will get back to you with regards to the date when it's scheduled for next hearing.
Okay, and, um, because of the operation, what do you think?
Uh, I want to hear from Chief Daly with regards to the fencing and that's why I'm a little hesitant to close.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, appeals count, move on to the next case?
Yes, please, next case.
Appeals calendar, continued hearing items, item number forty-one twenty-two-one fifty-seven A nineteen ninety Highland Boulevard Staten Island. Ms. Fulladair, you don't have to sworn in.
I, uh, we should have the architect for this one. Uh, her name is Charlene. Oh, I have to probably email her, sorry, I got a little caught up in our hearings.
What's her name? Charlene Wang, HQ ANG, she's here.
Okay, well then she's better than me. She, I don't know, Charlene, if you've accepted as a panelist or not.
Yeah, could you unmute and accept as a panelist, please, Ms. Wong? There you go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There you go, hi, thank you, I'm sorry for not getting back to you, but you were here, so thank you.
Okay, you don't have to be sworn in, it's an A case.
Oh, okay, great, so Elise Fulladair from Eric Palanic PC, I'm here with Charlene who, um, is the architect, we did get the comments from DOT yesterday and she's working on them, probably only needs about a week or a few days to get back, they weren't huge comments, they're pretty easy to address. Then the other comments is we heard Commissioner Sheta's comment about the rebar and that is a construction plan note and we can just remove it from the BSA plans to not have any confusion, if that makes sense to you.
You don't need to, you don't need to, you can, you can leave it.
Okay, I just, you know, if it's a construction note plan anyway, whatever you think is best. And then there were a bunch of different, um, in the last submission, we thought we addressed the various flood comments, we showed details about, um, vents, et cetera. And I wanted to know what additional language you were looking for or just some clarification we need on what, uh, put for, um, flood compliance, because they, because Charlene put, um, notes for that.
We, we have a standard condition for addressing Appendix G. I believe the project manager can send it to you regarding the flood vents, I just wanted to put it in the record that BSA is not taking a position on the size nor the number nor the layout of these flood vents.
Okay, no problem, so, um, whatever note you want added, we can add for Appendix G.
Yeah, I think the note separate added, um, the, you know, the, it's not, we are not opining on those notes, uh, which I see the notes that were added regarding flood vent and, uh, uh, flood zoning, uh, design, uh, flood zone design certification. I, I think what, um, Commissioner Sheta is referring to is that the case before us is for, uh, GCL thirty-six, we are, uh, we are not, I'm sorry, uh,
Thirty-five.
For thirty-five, um, so we are not opining on anything that is related to Appendix G or the flood regulation. So just add a note to that in the plan. And, um, so everything has to comply pursuant to the underlying regulations, that is to be determined by D O B.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Um, and I believe those were all the comments.
Okay.
Except for that, uh, FDNY.
Fire Department, yeah. Yeah. Uh, we, we need a fire department sign off also, right, on this one?
Yep.
Okay, so are there any other questions or comments from the commissioners? All right, uh, let's then go to the public. And if Chief Daly has any update, um.
Okay, the case that we're currently discussing is twenty-two-one fifty-seven A nineteen ninety Highland Boulevard Staten Island. This is proposed construction of a two-story commercial use located in partially in the bed of the map street, contrary to general city law section thirty-five, should you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six or toll-free number one eight eight four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter the webinar ID number eight seven eight one two one three 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 one and press the pound sign. You will then at the next prompt, press the pound sign. Once you're in, you'll press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute to be able to speak if you are calling in. Um, and then if you're already in the Zoom room, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your screen. Once you're in, you will be given three minutes to speak.
Um, I see Chief Daly's hand up, um, Chief Daly?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, I did receive comments from, from our city planning unit and the Bureau of Operations. They're only asking for the, to show the location of the nearest fire hydrant, uh, from the site. And once we provide that plan, uh, we'll be able to issue a letter of no objection for this application. I just need a distance to the nearest fire hydrant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, Ms. Fulladair, so I think that can be done.
Yeah, no problem, I saw Charlene shaking her head.
Yeah.
Okay, good, um, so how much time would you need to respond to DOT's comments and fire departments and make all the note, note changes?
Charlene, I'm gonna, since it's mostly you, I'm gonna ask you how much time
Yeah, I would say we can respond to the DOT and the fire department within a week or so.
Within what?
A week.
Okay. Um, we still would need to send the document back to DOT for DOT to sign off.
Yeah, so if, is it possible, uh, Ms. Yong, that you can send the, or at least send the DOT comment response? And then we can zap that right over to DOT and maybe that'll move it up?
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. Because they are backlogged.
Yeah. And we can't close until we have the sign offs.
Right, understood.
Okay, I don't think anyone's called in, let's see, uh, anybody has their hand up?
Okay, all right, we will, I think the most important is getting the DOT sign off, so we will try to coordinate our scheduling of the next hearing, uh, accordingly.
You know, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, but do send the plans as soon as possible, DOT.
Understood, you need that in order to schedule us, got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, new cases, item number forty-two twenty-two-one twenty-two A five hundred industrial loop Staten Island. This is proposed development of a two-story office and warehouse building, not fronting on a legally mapped street, contrary to general city law section thirty-six. Todd Dale?
Hi, uh, good afternoon, Todd Dale for the applicant.
Are you by yourself, Todd?
It is just me.
Okay, proceed, it's an A case, you don't have to be sworn in.
Great, so, uh, good afternoon, everyone, I did, uh, listen in on the review session and there weren't too many questions or issues raised. Will respond to any comments from the fire department that might be forthcoming. With respect to DEP, we did recently receive comments based on the revised plan that had been submitted. Just so the board is aware, the two primary things that DP wanted were a copy of an official map, which is already in the record. And then they also wanted a site connection proposal, industrial loop already has a master plan, uh, approved for the entire site. And so the site connection proposal is essentially just submitting something that matches that master plan. I'll check with the project engineers, it may already be done, uh, in which case we'll get that submitted to the record as soon as possible to forward to DEP. And then Vice Chair, you raised a question regarding the sidewalk widths. The latest proposed plan does say full sidewalk width, but I'll ask the architect if they can just put in an actual measurement there. Uh, so you're aware, um, it, it isn't necessarily clear from the satellite photos that were provided, but uh, there is no sidewalk for, in front of the lot north of the site and there is no sidewalk, uh, south of the site. If you go a few lots to the north, there is a sidewalk, so this sidewalk's designed to be a standard width sidewalk and to match the few lots that do have sidewalks, but industrial loop is a bit, um, here, here, here and there, as, as the sidewalks go, but th- this is proposed, so we'll get that width put onto the, the, the plan.
Yeah, I may be looking at an older plan, I'm looking at something that was submitted, well.
The most recent for industrial, I think we did, there was a submission September thirteenth, I believe is the date, I don't know
I think that's the one I'm looking at and, uh, unfortunately, that is, it is not true, it just says full width.
Right, so we'll, 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 it's no problem, we'll get that amended and put a width in there for the sidewalk.
Okay.
So we'll get that submitted.
Right, um, you know, I understand that there isn't a sidewalk, I kind of gathered that from the aerial, uh, that there isn't a sidewalk to the left or to the right or whichever way we're going to locate, north or south.
Right.
However, should there be any, this kind of allows for the continuity and, uh, um, you know, allows for a safe walking path.
No, agreed, and the proper only wants that sidewalk, so we'll get that plan, uh, submitted and, and, uh, the DEP SCP and then, um, we can respond to anything, I don't know if Commissioner Daly has comments now, if not, we can respond later, uh, to anything the fire department, uh, might raise.
Okay. Um, any questions or comments, uh, for Mr. Dale? Okay, um, Chief Daly, do you have any, uh, anything to add at this point?
Yes, Madam Chair, we will be issuing a letter of no objection for this application, I'll have that I'll submit tomorrow.
And, uh, do we have a builder's pavement plan on this, Mr. Dale, I didn't see it.
So, this industrial loop is a little unusual, there's a waiver of improvement, so you don't actually have to file a builder's pavement plan for the entirety.
Right.
If you look at the notice of comments response, I think it's called in the file, I don't know what, it's labeled RP eighty-three dash fifty-seven and we put BPP in parentheses, but that just is a recognition that no official builder's pavement plan. But I believe, uh, in the record at some point, we, typical of other industrial loops, we, we provided a section showing a typical, uh, a street improvement. I'm not sure if it was appended.
It in this, yeah, it's not
Yeah, it's not on the most recent plan, so what, if, if, if you go back one plan version, the street improvement plan's on there. So since we have to add in the sidewalk width, we'll make sure that that's appended as the second page of the proposed plans, so that you can see the private road section.
Okay.
Yeah, it was omitted, so I'll make a note to make those two changes to the plans.
Okay, great, thank you, uh, let's go to the public. I guess we have to call it PPP plan, triple.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so how long do you think it will take for you to make these corrections?
Well, the, the plans we could submit very quickly, um, the, the SCP filing, uh, I, I can't answer right now. I mean, when the hearings are done today, I'll reach out, it may already be in progress, but I believe we could submit something fairly quickly, in a, let's say, two weeks, both SCP filing and the plan, so you can use that, the board can use that uh, for, as far as scheduling goes.
Okay.
It shouldn't take very long.
Can I, can I call out? So, uh, that's okay, I don't want to interrupt your speaking. Um, so with the case we're currently discussing is twenty-two-one twenty-two A five hundred industrial loop Staten Island. Should you, it's a, a, a proposed development of a two-story office and warehouse, contrary to general city law section thirty-six. Um, should you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six or one eight eight four seven five four four nine nine, which is a toll-free number. You can enter the web, webinar ID number eight seven eight one two one three 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 one, press pound. At the next prompt, you will press pound sign. Press star nine to raise your hand, when turned side, press star six to unmute to speak on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your screen. Once you're allowed to, um, enter and speak, you will be afforded three minutes only.
So, um, Mr. Dale, while, uh, this is not for the board, uh, but any kind of greening that you can provide along your property line, that would be great.
I will, uh, I will, uh, pass it on.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, I guess the, there's, these are also ways of, uh, on, on these also some flood measures, these are also ways to control some of those, so just to think of, consider.
Noted.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, we're good.
Okay. Um, I don't think we have any major issues and the comments that are outstanding with DEP are just documentation. So I would, uh, make a recommendation to close, um, and Mr. Dale, you will provide all the corrections that we have asked for. Um, so, motion to close?
Chair, Vice Chair Chanda?
Hi.
Hi.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Okay. That's it. Okay, next case?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number tw- uh, sorry, item number forty-three, twenty twenty-two nineteen A, one twenty-one store Avenue Staten Island. Todd, proceed.
Hi, good afternoon, Todd Dale again for the applicant. Again, I would listen to review session and there were minimal comments that were raised, I'll just address them now. As noted, DEP did issue a letter of no objection for this. I'm not sure if the fire department has, but if there are any issues raised, we can respond to them, perhaps. Chief Inspector Daley has something to say at the hearing. Vice Chair, you raised something regarding the design of the sidewalks loop and how it's ten feet to eight feet. That is actually something that I noted with the design team, and that was done purposely. There is an approved builder's pavement plan in the record for this site that we submitted. And the intent behind the design is they believed it was safer for pedestrians to do that slope from ten feet to eight feet. You know, with respect to the curb cut and the angle of the street, that's why the proposed curb cut was actually increased to twenty-two feet. I believe the minimum is eighteen feet, so they did make it a little bit of a wider curb cut in reflection of the fact that this is angled, but the, the, the design of the sidewalk improvement was really done with pedestrian safety at the forefront, and having any sort of jog or more of a severe cut or, or, you know, left turn, I guess, is the best way to describe it, and the sidewalk was, was considered to be a little bit more erratic for pedestrians. And then, the only thing is, sorry, go ahead.
Question, does Store Avenue width narrow in front of your property?
Store is a bit erratic in its width, it, it varies, I think, between thirty feet and thirty-four feet, I'm trying to remember. Part of that variation is the other side is not as improved, but there, there, there is a varied, a varied width, so this is, this sidewalk was based on the developments, the existing developments that are on our side of the street, and trying to, you know, essentially, the people to the, to either side built their sidewalks, not necessarily considering that there would be a development in the middle, and we're trying to bridge that gap, gap to make it a little bit more.
Okay.
More even.
So I just want to make sure that when the curb cut is built, there would still be like a four-foot wide walkway in front of the sidewalk.
Yeah, there's definitely should, I'm gonna take a look here. See if that's listed on the builder's pavement plan. I know it's ten feet and eight feet, so yeah, it is eight point six feet and ten point two eight feet are showing as the maximum widths on either side of the, the curb cut, and the curb cut is proposed to be a, a wider width curb cut.
Right, and how deep will be the curb cut? Because a pedestrian needs to walk around the curb, because I just want to wa- want to make sure there's enough of a space for somebody to walk around the, the curb cut.
Oh, yes, so I see what you're saying. How's this, I don't know if it's actually shown on the plan, but based, I mean, I, I can ask them if they've got that measurement, but it looks like the curb cut, even if it's up to like a maximum of two feet, would still leave at least six feet plus.
So, just put a note of the dimension there, that.
All right, let me take a look here, let me see if I'm, I'm taking a look here also on. Trying to see, all right, I'll ask them about that dimension.
Yeah.
Rather than trying to do the math on the floor.
Yeah, I think this is, if you have a pavement plan, use that to determine what will be the depth of that curb cut, and then what, what is the remaining width of the sidewalk for pedestrian?
And so essentially. What the width of the sidewalk is between the lot and the curb cut.
Exactly, yes, yes.
At its narrowest point, all right, what is what's a sidewalk?
Yeah.
Okay, sure, I'll ask them about that. Yeah, it's all based on that approved BPP, so I'll ask them about that. Okay. And then, I think that, I, I'm sorry if I missed it, or I didn't quite understand it, Vice Chair, but you raised some comment about Lunston. You know, Lunston is not improved, it is mapped, it's a paper street on the other side of our lot, but I wasn't quite sure what your, your question was regarding Lunston.
Oh, oh, so since it's a map street, but it is not accessible, it is fully green, right?
Correct.
So, just mention it in your statement that the access is only feasible from the, even though this is a through lot site, access is only feasible from Store because Lunston is not built at this location and it's overgrown.
Okay, I'll take a look, I thought that was in the statement, I thought we mentioned it, but I'll double check, and at the very least, I'll make a, I'll make another affirmative statement in the cover letter when we submit the, the other information, that's fine. Okay. So that's it, now, just to, if I could just ask quickly, Vice Chair, do you want, I can ask them what that dimension is, do you need that dimension on the, I'm just wondering whether you want the revised plan submitted with that dimension, or if we just make a statement about what the width is, if that's sufficient.
I would want it also on the plan, so that.
That's, okay.
And this will go to DOT, so everybody's clear.
Okay. So since we have to submit that plan, I can just, I'll double check on Lunston, and, and at minimum put in a, an affirmative statement, just restating that Lunston's not open on the other side of the site.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Dale, from the commissioners? Okay, let's go to the public.
Okay, the case we are currently discussing is twenty twenty-two nineteen A, one twenty-one store Avenue Staten Island. This is proposed development of a two-story warehouse and office building not fronting on a legally mapped street, contrary to general city law section thirty-six. Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six, or our toll-free number one eight eight four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter the webinar ID number eight seven eight one two one three 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 one, and the pound sign. Once you, at the next prompt, you will press pound sign, once you're in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. You're calling in, star six to unmute to be able to speak on the phone, and if you are in the Zoom room already, please raise that little hand that is on the bottom of your screen. You, once you are allowed in, you will have three minutes to speak.
Okay. Um. Chief Daley?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, the fire department will be issuing a letter of no objection for this application tomorrow, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Dale, how long do you think it will take for you to make these corrections?
A week at most, because these are very, there's really only one substantive plan item in the statement, it's easy enough to do, so we could do this very quickly.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, hold on, hold on. You don't want us to close the case?
Oh, no, oh, sorry, I'm jumping the gun, I'm very excited to have things go so quickly.
Okay, we're good, go ahead.
All right, so, I think the changes are not substantive, so we just need to reflect those in the statement and in the plan, so I make the recommendation that we make a motion to close.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Okay, hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zoning calendar, continued hearing items, item number forty-four, twenty twenty-eighty-six BZ fifteen Parkville Avenue, Brooklyn. Neil, Neil, Neil. Mr. Weisbart, are you here? There we go, thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, Vice Chair Commissioners.
Oh, Mr. Mr. Vibro, your sound is very, very tinny, not able to hear you clearly.
Is this any better?
Hmm, no, unfortunately not.
Can I just get away from the mic? The mic is, is that any better?
Yes.
That is better, okay.
No, it's not.
No?
It's still, I don't know, there's some.
The problem is, it's.
There you go, it's better, now it's better.
All right, great, I, good afternoon, Madam Chair Commissioners, Neil Weisbart on behalf of Fifteen Parkville LLC, I'm also here with COVID Sexana to be sworn in.
Okay. Okay, COVID? Where are they? Let COVID in? Yeah, I signed on that. Wonderful name. Could, okay, that's it, you on COVID? Okay, you're the environmental person, okay, raise your right hands. Thank you, sir. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Neil.
Hi, so we attended executive session this morning, and seems as though there's a few open items regarding DOT's request about the curb cut extension. The applicant is willing to enter into a commitment letter, as well as having this condition be part of the board's resolution, that if it is determined to be geometrically feasible by DOT, as they mentioned in their comment letter, that the applicant will extend that curb cut and will be responsible for all costs associated with that. The second comment was provide, this is regarding the parking plan, BSA one zero three, that the plan be revised to add a four-foot wide striped pedestrian area, and also add a bollard to prevent cars from potentially hitting anyone in the pedestrian area. And between review session and this hearing, I submitted a revised plan showing that.
Oh, you did that today?
Yes, that was submitted to submit, NICC, Ms. Mathias and Mr. Costanza, Angela, so that should be in.
When was that submitted? I don't see it, sorry.
We got it at eleven forty-one.
Let's forward it right now.
Eleven forty-one, I'll download it and, and forward it, so.
Can you share the screen, Ms. Pranga?
Okay, hold on, let me try to do that.
Oh, it has to be downloaded, I'm sorry, sorry.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to do it while, while you speak, hold on a moment, thanks.
Okay. Okay, so while Ms. Pranga is downloading, what about my other comment?
Okay, so the, the bollards were added and the strip areas added, regarding your comment about the lights to try to activate the street frontage. The applicant has no problem installing some lights that change color, I, we're not sure how we're going to show that on a plan, and if that can be a part of the resolution, the applicant is fine and understands what the board is seeking and will provide such lighting.
Yeah, I, I think, maybe, just a note to that effect can be something, you know, some creative lighting would be done to encourage activation of the street frontage, we can put that in the resolution, maybe a note may not work. But everything has to comply, of course, I'm not asking for, you know, those neon lights and the, the disco lights or anything like that.
We can get to the oncoming cars.
Yes, yes.
And I believe that was the only issues.
Okay.
So it was, Ms. Pranga, that was Plan BSA one oh three.
And the other comment was all the DOT comments should be reflected in all the ground floor plans, I know you.
Talked, so the light pole has already been addressed, there was a submission last week, and you can see here on this plan, actually, at the top left, relocate light pole to seven feet away from curb cut. That note was in response to prior DOT comment, and the curb extension, DOT itself recognizes that this may not even be geometrically feasible, so we can't really draw a plan right now, but we're willing to enter that commitment letter that if it is found to be geometrically feasible, as well as adding to your resolution, that the applicant and DOT will work together, and it will be the sole responsibility of the applicant to design it and pay for it, its relocation.
Okay, so you will provide an affidavit, a letter confirming that, I think the DOT has a standard letter, Ms. Pranga mentioned that, so you should follow that format.
Okay, that was for the light pole, but COVID, you might, COVID is from Sam Schwartz's office, he may know more about this, but we will provide what's ever needed, and we're respectfully requesting that the hearing be closed today, but we'll do everything before decision date in a couple of weeks, if, if needed, or if everything's just made part of the resolution.
Okay, so I see the four-foot wide striped area has been proposed, and bollards along that corner area. Okay, you're just providing one bollard?
If you tell us to add more, we'll add more.
Uh, any, this is. I'm just looking in terms of the turning radius, that should be enough, and this, it shouldn't be one of those plastic ones, it should be really a solid one, so that.
It will be permanently installed.
Okay.
Permanent, permanent bollard, okay.
Yeah, permanently installed bollard, that's.
Do you want that noted up there, it says permanent?
Yeah, permanent, yeah. I mean, you, you understand why I'm asking for that, right? When you make that turn, sometimes.
Oh, no, I do, I completely understand.
Right.
I think to note that there will be a bollard installed there should be sufficient, but we can say permanent bollard.
Yeah, I, I don't want this to be the plastic one, which just send one card, drops it, and then people start going over it, so that's really why I want this to be a permanent one. And since that's a blind spot, you really don't want to take that chance.
So I'll have the architect do that, it, it might be a little late today because he's observing the Jewish holiday now, and so I'll get it in by Thursday.
Yep, that's fine. Okay, my comments were addressed, any questions or comments that you may have for the applicants, commissioners? Then let's go to the public.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
As far as the commitment letter, should I work with council's office, BSA, or, or if, if COVID, do you know of a, such a commitment form by DOT?
No, I'm not bad for a DOT form.
How should we handle that commitment letter?
I, I would say. Oh, sorry. I was gonna say, did we do it on, on Jay's case or something?
Yeah, we had something on Jay.
Similar language?
Uh, yeah, we'll look into that and maybe provide a sample.
Thank you.
They have a form that they gave us today, and then we could look for samples, it's usually very case-related, so it would basically take the comments that are needed from the DOT comments, and then put it on the applicant letterhead as a commitment, so.
Okay, I think I could probably craft it, and then I'll run it past the board.
Okay.
Yes, please do.
Thanks.
And they'll want to look at the revised plan, DOT will want to look at the revised plans and the EAS before final sign offs.
Okay, when you said adding the curb cut on Parkville, it's subject to DOT, so it would be part of the commitment letter?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, let's go to the public.
Okay, the case we are currently discussing is twenty twenty-eighty-six BZ fifteen Parkville Avenue, Brooklyn. This is a special permit to permit the reduction of accessory off-street parking spaces for Use Group Six Office. This is a special permit to permit the reduction of accessory off-street parking spaces for Use Group 6 office. Should you wish to discuss, dial 646-558-8656 or our toll-free number 1-884-754-4499. You will enter the webinar ID number 878-1213-3331 and pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're in, you'll press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute to speak if you're on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room or ready, please raise your Zoom hand, which is a small hand that is on the lower part of your screen. Once you are allowed in, you will have three minutes to speak.
Okay, um, so how long will it take for you to make these changes, Mr. Whitebird?
We want to do it, we'll get them done as quickly as possible so we can be, if you, if the hearing is closed, so we can be heard at the next hearing for a vote. So our team's willing to turn around everything right away. We're under a lot of pressure to get this started, so I will have everything to you by the end of the week.
Okay. Okay, um, Ms. Banky, do we have any other outstanding secret?
No, just this.
Okay, all right. Um, well, I, I cannot promise the earliest possible close vote date, but we will do our best. Our schedule is kind of getting very busy already based on yesterday's hearing and, and what we have. So we will do our best.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to, oh, no, 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 we still are in the public.
It's done.
Done?
Done.
Does DOT need to see that commitment letter?
Yes, I discussed with them if, um, that all these, they, they said this was a conditional sign-off, but they do, they will want to look at, um, this items, I'm sure, just...
Okay, so I'm just factoring in the time that which will take, the back and forth. So, Mr., uh, so you should work together, uh, Mr. Weisbart with, uh, Jella and Tracy to get that commitment letter so that DOT can sign up on it. Uh, Commissioner Hartley Brown, were you going to say something? Oh, okay, yeah.
Everybody's good?
Everybody's good.
No further comments, okay.
Okay, all right, so I make a motion to close. There will be submission, uh, that is the revised plan, um, commitment letter, um, and, um, yep, anything, anything I missed?
Nope. Okay, motion to close? Vice, Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yum?
Aye.
It's good to see you, Mr. Saxana. We were colleagues at City Planning.
Likewise, Vice Chair.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, bye.
Do you wish to move on, Madam Chair?
Uh, does anybody want to take a five-minute break or you want to move on?
Keep going.
Commissioners, I guess we want to move on. It's going to be a long bit.
Okay.
All right, let's move on.
Okay, item number 45, 2020-88BZ 315 Berry Street, Brooklyn. This is a special permit. 315 Berry Street. This is Richard Lobell. I don't know, Richard Lobell, Amanda Iannotti, right?
Yeah. Richard Lobell, Amanda Iannotti, oh, we have a pretty big list of people.
Well, some I think are the neighbors, but there's the, um, just the applicants and the applicants' team. So who's with you, Ms. Iannotti?
Um, Richard, um, also expecting, uh, Tim's here, Tim Doubleton, Amber. We registered a lot more, but I, I do think that's all we will need for this discussion. Rebecca Barr, yes, okay, that's it.
Rebecca Barr?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so can everyone join us panelists on mute? And, all right, so we're, that's, your team is ready?
Ready.
Thank you, Ms. Iannotti. Raise your right hands, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yeah.
I do.
I do.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you, we attended the executive review session and listened to the board's comments. Um, we would like to thank the board first and foremost for the careful consideration of all of our submissions on this case and we too are excited, um, to implement this essential project in Brooklyn. Um, just a few things that came up in the executive session is, uh, yes, seeker is still outstanding. We are ready with a revised EAS to submit, uh, I believe later today. Amber is on, if you have any questions for her, but we, we are ready with our revised EAS and, um, revised proposed pa, plans will also accompany that submission with required environmental notes. Um, the other, um, question that came up this morning was about the discrepancy in the, uh, DOB ZRD-1 with the reference to 7336. I apologize, we did not catch that, but thank the board for pointing that out, uh, 7316, sorry. Um, we thank the board for pointing that out. We also do believe that it is a, a typo in the request. Um, we did state 7314 and also in condition one, um, it states Use Group 6D, which goes along with 7314. If it was 7316, it would have said Use Group 17. Um, so we do believe it is a typo, condition one should say 7314. Um, we would just like to discuss with the board how you would like us to document this correction. Um, maybe we can ask the examiner for an email or a letter, um, to, to, to correct the condition one. I'm not sure if we can resubmit an entire ZRD-1 for that, but we have, um, Tim Dumbleton, project architect, who filed this ZRD on the line to also discuss that with you.
Um, definitely needs to be corrected for the record. Um, I understand the miss, uh, the, it was, uh, you know, it was an oversight at DOB's part, but, uh, some documentation recognizing that the review was done based on 7314 needs to be acknowledged by DOB.
Um, General Counsel...
Will be sufficient?
Uh, I, I want to hear from General Counsel Vine if, uh, any better suggestion, uh, something that would be legally sound and would be sufficient.
Uh, I, I believe the board would like to request, if the board would like to, a, whether getting the applicant to have DOB reissue the ZRD-1, uh, acknowledging the typo and correcting the errors in the ZRD-1 to amend it to 7314 under this current ZRD-1 or whether the applicant needs to refile it, uh, and have it prosecuted through DOB correctly. Uh, this ZRD-1, uh, as it currently stands cannot be relied upon.
Okay, we'll, we'll approach DOB and request that they, um, issue a revised, uh, that they issue revised documentation.
Thank you. Um, all right, uh, any other questions or clarification comments?
Oh, I believe that was it.
Okay, all right. Um, we do appreciate you, um, doing, doing a thorough review with, uh, Fire Department and DOB in responding to the questions. It is, uh, you know, first, first one, we're all trying to learn and, uh, thank you for your patience trying to educate all of us and, and for us all to become aware of what this uh, system entails. And, you know, as Chief Daly pointed out, it's actually now called Stationary Energy Storage System. So please all figure out a name that, that works across all the agencies. Or if you want to do best slash ESS slash SESs, do whatever it takes, but just make sure it's consistent across everybody. I don't want the, uh, different agencies providing different reports stating different things. So just figure that out. Um, okay, any questions or comments from the commissioners? All right.
The commissioners are shaking their head, no?
No, um, all right, any, uh, any comments from our general counsel or from Ms. Banky or from, that we need to know about? Okay, let's go to the public.
Okay, so the case, the current, the case we are currently discussing is 2020-88BZ 315 Berry Street, Brooklyn. This is a special permit under section CR 73-14 to permit the construction of an electrical utility substation Use Group 6D on the roof of an existing building. If you wish to discuss, dial 646-558-8656 or our toll-free number 1-884-754-4499. You will enter the webinar ID number 878-1213-3331 and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign. Please, uh, press, then you will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute to speak if you are on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room or ready and wish to speak, please raise your Zoom hand. Once you're permitted in, you will have three minutes to speak. We have about three, right? Hands up. Nice, two, only two? Three? We let them in one by one?
Yes, please.
Okay. Jennifer Coopers, then there's, um, I want to take, okay.
I, um...
And then there's someone Silver?
Yeah, I'm not able to see the participants, so, um, Ms. Mathias, take them in the order.
I haven't, I can't see them, oh, wait, sorry. Let me go to the other screen.
I see Olivia...
Aaron Schwartz, Olivia Silver, Aaron Schwartz. Um, anyone else who's wishing to speak, please raise your Zoom hand? Okay, um, we could start with Ms. Coop, uh, I'm sorry to mispronounce your name, K-U-I-P-E-R, Coopers?
Yes, hello, my name is Jennifer Kipers.
Kipers, thank you, sorry.
That's okay. Um, yeah, I've, I've attended all three of these public hearings. I'm a tenant at 315 Berry for more than 20 years. Um, I'm still, I still have outstanding concerns. One regarding the need, um, it's been, it keeps being repeated that there's a generalized need for, you know, energy storage, but it's not connected to this local community. We have never experienced a brownout or a blackout, not even during Superstorm Sandy. So this is actually stable. Second of all, I didn't see in the documents submitted that were publicly, um, accessible to what this exhaustive search for other locations were because the same corridor that Microgrid wants to feed is, uh, directly adjacent to the, uh, Brooklyn Navy Yard, which is a giant industrial area with giant industrial buildings that definitely can support this weight and, um, is an appropriate area to be having this project. Um, I'm really concerned that the safety and structural concerns are kind of being brushed aside because maybe my, my understanding of zoning law is, um, is not correct, but I thought it was also to serve the, you know, the interest of keeping residential areas safe from industrial use. Um, our building, yes, it's being worked on, but it's still flooding. Um, there's still holes to the outside. I, I don't think this building is, you know, capable or structurally, it's an, and it's the smart or wise choice to put, um, such a thing here. There's that fire in California that was at an industrial site that, um, caused a, a shelter in place order for a day. Um, you know, we live here, we're at the front lines of what will happen at, at this. This is an experiment, this has not been done before. I feel like, uh, yes, we will have to go to the sister agencies, but I really feel like, um, our lives are in the very li, like, safety, the actual safety of lives is just being brushed aside for this. Um, I don't think that's wise. Um, and I also noted in previous hearings, the commissioners seemed to be more concerned about the structural and safety, um, viability of this location and now that has been kind of shunted. Um, it did, I, in the FDNY's, um, unconditional statement of approval, I don't see that they actually did oversight. I, I just think they, um, what I understand is that they advised code to be, uh, abided by, but they didn't actually, like, there's no words about, even the fire suppression system, there's no correlation to what is actually needed in thermal runaway with, of these storage systems of this size, especially if, like, the New York Housing Authority is proposing a ban on, on just the size of lithium-ion batteries on bikes and they're proposing a ban of them in public housing because of the fires they've caused. This is on a much grander scale. And those are my notes. I wish our concerns would be spoken to, but it doesn't seem like that's going to be the case. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sorry, oh, sorry. Wants to be difficult, sorry. Okay, uh, Ms., Ms. Madden? Please unmute. You'll have three minutes to speak. You want a visual, your video?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Do you want to join with video?
Uh, no, thank you.
Video is not required.
No, I'm, I'm just asking.
Oh, no, no, thank you. Um, I was going to read and then, um, my husband is also on the same Zoom call, uh, with me, so I was hoping that he could present his comments after I do, if that's okay.
It's, let me start the three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Go.
Um, I've also, um, been a 20-year tenant of the building, um, and I appreciate this opportunity to give my comments today. Um, Microgrid asserts that there is a desperate need for battery, battery energy storage in the Water Street corridor and that the rooftop of our building is the only site that will solve this problem. So therefore you should ignore facts, calculations, precedent, microgoods lies, the grave concern of tenants, testimony and document, documentation of ongoing structural issues and the, in the building and general common sense that this is a bad and potentially dangerous idea. If the BSA is going to look at this in the most narrow of special permit criteria and disregarded general consideration of whether this is a good idea, then I have some specific questions. I asked the BSA how you actually know the applicant had serious difficulties in locating the project in a district where it is permitted as of right because they said so? Did you review any of their offers and proposed terms to make sure that the offers were competitive? Is it a legitimate serious difficulty if it is self-imposed by their own unwillingness to offer more money and/or shorter leases? If you deny this poorly cited industrial scale, scale project, Microgrid will likely go back to landlords in industrial and commercial zones in the Water Street corridor and make them better offers, perhaps with more money and the 10-year leases that they say they never offer, but admitted they sometimes do. If you look at the zoning map of the Water Street corridor, you will notice that at least half of this area is zone non-residential. There is no necessity that this project be located within a residential district to serve this area. This project is not the only way that this need could be met. If the city wants to encourage more battery energy storage systems, they should do so in an organized, thoughtful and cohesive way. This should not be left to limited liability hedge fund-backed private companies to shoehorn these projects in willy-nilly wherever they can find a landlord of a large residential building who is shortsighted enough to accept a not-so-good offer. Pecker plants have been retrofitted with battery energy storage systems. The Brooklyn Navy Yard is 300 acres of dedicated manufacturing space. The city has been developing man, uh, massive parks in North Williamsburg. They could set aside a small corner for actual renewable energy projects. Other innovative proposals have included battery storage sys, uh, barges. I would like to point out that ZR 7314 states that in residence districts, the BSA may permit electric or gas utility substations, but not that, not that it must. This type of battery ener, uh, battery installation on a residential rooftop has not been done anywhere else in the world as far as the BSA and the applicants could determine. to decide on to decide on this issue in the most narrow of criteria seems ludicrous as they will certainly as it will certainly set a huge precedent. I am also wondering if neighbors and community members who may be impacted by the new plan with part of the installation at ground level have been properly notified of the changes. Many daycares and preschools in the area use the playground right next to the transformers and switchgear on a daily basis, even if most are not located within hundred or two hundred feet of the project. In summary, this project is ill sighted and dangerous. Microgrid is putting pressure to override sound judgment and zoning restrictions and potentially an enormous burden on tenants and community members simply because they want to maximize their own profits. Thank you for your time. And here is my husband, Christopher Cork.
All right, just let me reset the clock. Go.
Thank you, hi, Chris Burke, similarly twenty five year resident of the building. First, I want to state plainly what we all know is true. The elephant in the room, so to speak, is that this project is a catastrophe waiting to happen. The reason resistance you have heard from tenants at three fifteen Berry Street has been so strong is that this massive project is a mortal threat to us. Given the current disposition of the board to approve the special permit application on narrow grounds, I just want to get a few facts and points on the record in the case of future appeal or legal action and for the benefit of press or others who may view this meeting and not be familiar with the extensive record of the case. First, in adhering rigidly to assessing the project based on section seventy three fourteen, the board is doing what Mr. Lobel has expressly asked it to do, that is abandon your agency to review the project and its impacts fully. Mr. Lobel's argument from the beginning has been that if microgrid ticks a couple of boxes, you should approve the microgrid application. Quote, if you meet the narrow finding to the special permit, you get the special permit. It's actually a legislative duty of the B S A to grant the special permit. In other words, if the gloves do not fit, you must acquit. Your website, however, states the following. Quote, the board is empowered by the city charter to interpret the meeting and applicability of the zoning resolution, resolution, the New York City Construction Code and the multiple dwelling law. This power includes the ability to vary in certain instances the provisions of these regulations, unquote. The meaning of this is clear. You do have the power and agency to look at the specifics and broader impact of the application. Former Chair Perlmutter made this plain in earlier hearings and if this were not the case and why has the board spent a year and a half studying the structural and safety issue involved in this unprecedented and dangerous project? Despite that, it's clear that after all the testimony and facts presented about the inadequacy of this building for the project after the numerous safety issues with the kinds of batteries and the dangers of putting them in a residential location after Commissioner Sheta's hair on fire warnings about the fragility of the building, you intend to go forward. But even with the even within the narrow scope of section seventy three oh three and seventy three fourteen, Microgrid has failed by any reasonable measure to meet the burdens of special dispensation. Vice Chair Shatter wrote a series of claims by Microgrid this morning as evidence of meeting the requirements of the special permit, but Microgrid has made numerous false and misleading claims to the board regarding the project, which you should factor into consideration. At the April twenty twenty one B S A hearing, Rebecca Barr, then listed as Microgrid's safety officer, told you that these batteries, meaning specifically the lithium ion phosphate or L F P batteries, quote, do not explode and catch fire like other more generic lithium ion batteries that you mentioned, end quote. Three days later, after she made this statement, a massive L F P battery array in Beijing placed on a rooftop exploded and burned. Two firefighters were killed. I imagine that Ms. Barr has not contacted you since then to correct the record. Mr. Bannerman stated in the hearing that under no circumstances could they do a lease for a battery array for less than twenty years. Until under questioning, he revealed that Microgrid had indeed signed a lease with the landlord for ten.
Sorry, please wrap up your three minutes.
This calls into serious question whether they meet the standard that, quote, there are serious difficulties in locating in a district when it's permitted as of right. There are other numerous exaggerations and claims that they've made about the system, which I pointed out earlier in letters, will be happy to document in a future letter. Wrapping up, I think these facts may clear that Microgrid has not met its obligation even with the narrow scope the board is choosing to take. Community Board want to whom the board is supposed to give some regard to, but it's thirty one to one that this project was not a net benefit to the community. I appreciate the board member sympathy for residents that are about to be used as guinea pigs for this never been done public utility project. I also have sympathy for the board, which due to circumstances beyond its control has had this hand grenade of a proposal that should be addressed by broader policy tossed into its lap. It won't be the last, as Mr. Lobel has written to you, that there is a broad intent to use this zoning loophole for future such projects. But that does not aggravate the peril of this project. To return to the elephant in the room, the Department of Buildings has the tail, the fire department the trunk, and the board is the only entity that has seen the deeply problematic nature.
Please wrap up.
Projects, I urge you.
Three minutes.
Consideration carefully, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person, Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm also a longtime tenant of the building. I guess I just want to say that I am empathetic to the concern that we could be facing brownouts potentially in the future. I'm originally grew up in California where that's more of an issue. With that said, I've lived here for a long time. I see huge buildings getting erected everywhere. It's really hard to believe that this is literally the only site where something like this could happen. This morning I woke up, it's raining outside and my entire building, my entire flat is flooded. Like, it's not normal for your apartments or anyone else's apartments that I know when it rains to have water just flood the entire apartment. And it's literally, I spent two hours mopping it. So it it it's just frankly, a little bit hard to believe that this old building is literally the only place where you could install a massive battery. I I I just frankly, don't believe that at all. So I don't know, that's my comment, thanks.
Okay. Ms. Mr. Silver?
Yeah.
Start, go ahead. You'll have three minutes, two fifty side. Are you there, sir? Can you unmute?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Sure.
You hear me?
Yes, sir, start, go ahead.
Good.
Hear you.
We can hear you, go ahead.
Hey, fine. Between South Eleventh Street and North Eleventh Street here in Williamsburg, there are twenty four projects being constructed at the moment. Three of them are massive projects where nobody is living, where Microgrid could go over and talk to the people who are putting up these projects and put a hundred batteries on the roofs of these places, no problem. Okay. So the idea of putting their stuff on our building is dangerous and absurd. It's a kind of insane idea. All right, that's A. B. Right now, there's work taking place on the facade of the building. Mr. Sheta in the past has expressed serious concerns about the stability of the building to withhold, you know, withstand all of this stuff that they're going to put like, you know, three hundred thousand pounds of equipment on the top of a building that was built in nineteen oh three. Okay, so what we would like is that after the facade is completed to have our engineer do a thorough examination of the building. Thanks.
Okay, next speaker, Ms. Silver.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, please start.
I've lived in this building for twenty five years. This is not a landlord tenant issue. The landlord has been bought off by Microgrid. He doesn't have the power to approve a special permit. The board does. This is a threat to myself, my parents, to everybody living in this building. These kinds of batteries can and do combust in South Korea, Texas, China, Australia, California. In Brooklyn, maybe not, but what if? This is my life. I don't want to hear about sympathies about satisfying regulations about meeting codes. I want an assurance that I will be safe. How can I feel safe when everybody seems to have given in to the economic and political pressures surrounding this project? When there can be no assurances because something like this has never been done before? How am I supposed to believe that our falling apart building is the only solution for saving the Water Street network? I thought that zoning laws were put in place to keep people safe. Microgrid has a perfectly good as of right site, let them put it there. Putting this on top of our building is completely insane. It's clear that Microgrid will say whatever it takes to ram this project through. It's also clear that they're liars, that they've been dishonest from the start when they marketed this as a solar project and that they will continue to be dishonest. It's clear that the landlord cares more about money than the tenants. It's clear that there's been a radical shift in the attitude of this board towards tenants and that they're suddenly not concerned about anything beyond the zoning aspects of this. So what now? We're just supposed to relegate ourselves to become guinea pigs for a crazy project? This is a residential building, not a research facility. Human life must take precedent. You're saying the benefits of this project for the community outweigh any hazards and disadvantages? The people in this building are the community. I don't see how it would benefit us to potentially get blown up. Approving this is completely unconscionable. The adverse effects Commissioner Ottley Brown mentioned before, yeah, those are our lives. The safety and well being of the people at three fifteen Berry Street is directly tied to the decision this board makes. Denying that would be completely hypocritical. I hope you think about that before you vote yes, thank you.
Okay, anyone else who wishes to speak, please raise your hand. Mr. Swan, are you calling in to speak? Anyone else who wishes to speak? Who hasn't spoken before? Neighbors? Mr. Swan?
Yeah.
Are you a neighbor?
Okay.
Go ahead. Unmute. I can't hear you. Can you unmute, Mr. Swan?
All right. Now, I understand that the construction in the neighborhood and more people moving in has caused a greater burden on on Con Ed. And I I don't understand why the these new buildings aren't aren't better places for these batteries. Except that we're we're pretty much low income people here and we don't have the political connections, so we are very suspicious. And I am very concerned about about this. I've lived in this building for sixteen years. And I I really don't trust any of this. So that's all I gotta say. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Wriggle, do you wish to speak, please unmute, oh, you're unmuted.
All right, thank you for giving me the space. I'll try not to take up much time, but I do want to say that the shift in tone that the board has taken towards okaying a project that is has never been placed on top of a resident a residential building, to think about changing zoning, which is set up to protect to protect people, to protect not just us, to protect the users of the playground next to us. Heavily used playground in a dense area. The fact that well, everything, everything you've heard before, from the very beginning, it's been clear and we all listened. We all listened to Microgrid's presentations. And I agree with the previous speaker Nate. This, you know, conservation, energy, energy wise use is very important. However, this is a privately funded company that the city is considering shoeing in because it it's faster than the city working out an overall plan towards reducing wasted energy towards towards conservation of whatever resources we have left at this point. And I'm very saddened that people just want to pass the buck towards someone, you know, or a group, a consortium with enough money to imply that they'll do the right thing. That's always been proven to be the case. They can no longer be responsible. This building has already had instances of companies coming and going, you know, you know, for the sake, for the landlord's profit, where where things are no longer maintained. The cable companies come and go. The 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 leaving their materials behind, we don't know, we don't know how this, what will happen when when this project changes hands and the next you know, the next, who's responsible for the maintenance long term? We we don't have answers to any of our questions. Everyone here is presented well, I I'm sorry, I'm emotional. But it's a very clear that this is, this is not in in the interest of working people here in the city. And thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Please raise your hand. Louis Bellport, Louise Bellport?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, I'm just gonna say a couple of sentences. I've written extensively about this the whole time. This year and a half, listening to this. And the shift in the board, it's just, it's just so corrupt, I'm sorry. We're not, you're not fooling anybody. This, we're doomed and you guys are helping doom us, thank you.
Okay, anyone else who wishes to speak from the public? Please raise your hand or call in. That's it. I don't think there's anyone, I don't see any other hands. Do you want me to do the phone call again? If you wish to speak, dial in six four six five five eight eight six five six or the toll free number one eight eight four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter the webinar ID number eight seven eight one two one three 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 one and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign. Press star nine once you're in to raise your hand. Press star six to unmute to be able to speak on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room or ready and want to raise your hand, please raise your hand by that little hand that is on the bottom of your screen.
Let's wait for a couple of minutes.
All right, so let me put the, let me, let me put the timer on, so this we have it appropriately.
Yeah. For another three minutes, let's see.
One another three minutes, okay. Okay, let's start that, clock is started. Most time. Oops, sorry. Timer went off. Okay.
There is one member in the waiting room with their hand raised, Teresa Dillon.
Teresa Dillon, yeah. Ms. Dillon? Are you in? Someone let her in? Screen is so crowded, I can't see. Ms. Dillon? I don't see your hand.
Yeah.
I don't see the hand up anymore. Am I mistaken?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm not.
I don't see another, I don't see a hand up.
She's no longer, she's no longer joined.
Yeah, okay. So are we good?
Okay.
Okay.
I, I do want to um thank the tenants calling in. I know it is not easy. Um, uh, and the, the technical aspect of this project, it, it is a very narrow scope of the project and what is before the board is specifically use. And uh the board is reviewing whether such a new shall be permitted. And as I'd stated earlier, the applicant did identify other as-of-right sites and so to address the need, only two sites were feasible in terms of viability of this operation. And one of them happens to be in an as-of-right site and the other one happens to be the subject site and that is why it is before us. Um, in terms of uh the jurisdiction, our jurisdiction is only limited to reviewing the special permit. With that said, as I had said and all the commissioners had said um uh so consistently, is that we did hear the community, the tenants concern. And we, uh, and with that, the applicant was asked to look at the structural integrity of the building, review all of the issues with fire department. Fire department is um in, has been attending all our hearings and is fully aware of the structural issues and what it is, what is needed for the fire safety of the, of the building and of the system and, and together. Uh, so all of those are being looked at by the right agency who has the skills, the expertise and the jurisdiction and the oversight of, of ensuring that such a facility is maintained, retained and operated um in the manner that should be considered safe, compliant and uh would meet all the regulatory controls of all these relevant agencies. We are not a, uh, we are not an implementing body. We are a quasi-judicial body. We are asked to review the, in the use special permit. And that is really what we are doing, but at the same time, the board does have the authority to bring this to the attention of the rightful agencies of the issues that has been raised and, and have those be addressed. And that is what the board is since the last two hearings has been doing. And uh I um, I am and I would say that the applicant is fully on notice and is aware of uh the demand and the pressures and the expectations of doing this correctly. And uh, and uh fire department is on this board um, uh, on this hearing is fully aware of what is before them. And DOB is also fully aware of it and will be made aware of through all our conditions. Should we proceed to go forward?
I'm sorry, uh, Madam Vice Chair. Uh, Commissioner Yun said I think I misstated the one eight hundred eight, eight, eight number. Commissioner, is that a problem, Chase? She said, I don't think I read it fully, right?
Could you please uh put the screen up and reread it and all of the? Thank you.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yep, now go ahead.
Okay, so we're still discussing twenty twenty eighty-eight BZ three fifteen Berry Street. The dial-in number is not four six, six four six five five eight eight six five six or our toll-free number, which is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. Uh, once you were on, you can enter the webinar ID number, which is eight seven eight one two one three 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 one. Press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign. Press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute if you are calling on the phone. And if you are in the Zoom room, please raise your Zoom hand. Once you have been allowed in to speak, you will have three minutes to uh, be allowed to speak, sorry. Should I do another clock or one minute? What, two minutes, Chase?
Uh, just keep it up for another minute, please, to allow for the time lag on YouTube.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you, Commissioner.
That's okay. Thank you, Commissioner Yun for catching that.
Okay, I have a clock running. Okay, one minute is up.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, I apologize, board members.
No, that's okay. Thank you. Um, it's better to give everybody the opportunity. Um, this, the genuine concerns, but we need to.
Commissioner Sheta has his hand up.
Okay, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I, I just wanna respond to um what I hear during the testimony from the public about changing position, positions. I, I just wanna like make sure and clarify that this is crystal clear. There is no change in position. What we raised before regarding the structural issues in the building was based on photos, videos and other documents that we obtained. I still have the same position. And I did listen to one of the public indicating that we're pushing issues aside. We're not doing that. We just do not have the jurisdiction to like pursue a full review. And that's why we're asking, in case this application moves forward, we're asking the sister agencies to look at the issues that we raised. I just wanted this to be clear. Thank you.
Thanks.
Still a bell, oh, sorry.
Um, is Mrs. Labet's?
Hand up, yeah.
Mr. Labet.
Commissioners, thank you. Uh, the um, those opposing the application made several statements on the record, so I just wanted an opportunity to respond specifically as they cited uh our office as well as the applicant. Um, so, you know, I, I would just again thank the board for what has now been extremely careful consideration of this matter over the course of years. Uh, I understand that this is not a hasty decision. Uh, and while it is uh stated by the opposition that this will set precedent, that is uh expressly recognized by the board. This is a, an application of first impression. Um, special permits, as, as was also stated by the opposition, uh, are narrowly tailored for specific uh relief. And here, the special permit and the board decides on many different types of special permits, the findings of this special permit are actually two. Uh, the second one, the B finding relates to the site, that the site for such use has a minimum lot area of forty-five hundred square feet, a factual matter that is dealt with on the record. So we are left with the A finding, which basically discusses serious difficulties uh and that make it necessary to locate within a residential district. Uh, un- unlike the statements by the opposition, this does not mean the only cited means what it says, that there are sypho-serious, serious difficulties that make it necessary to locate here. Um, this is a valid use group six D use. Uh, this is not a use group seventeen use. The opposition made statements with regards to an industrial use of the site. That is not the case. A use group six uses in the same use group as retail and other utility uses. Uh, this has been found to be a valid six D use. An objection was received and duly received from the Department of Buildings. Uh, we've taken all necessary precautions with regards to our filings and with regards to uh information in this application. Uh, evidence with regards to the difficulties locating uh this, this uh facility have been submitted to the board now for over two years. The first letter being from July tenth, twenty twenty, submitted by microgr- microgrid plus supplemental submissions which discussed the need here. Uh, opposition statements themselves recognize the potential here for brownouts and much worse. Uh, and so we're hopeful that as we move forward, uh, we will be uh basically achieve a resolution here. And um, as the board stated in the uh executive session, the findings are met and that we will receive the requested special permit. I would close by saying that the applicant here has every interest in maintaining the safety and integrity of the site and will continue to do so. Uh, and uh has, uh, I think presented to the board everything in good faith as well as their efforts uh to open communication and to uh provide for strict scrutiny by all the necessary agencies. Again, we thank the board for its consideration and are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um, any other questions or comments uh from the commissioners to the applicant? Okay. Um, we still have an open secret, so we can't close on it. Um, any um I think we need to wait for that. Um, and anything that comes as a result of it, um, I guess will need to be reflected uh in any of the revisions. Um, I, you should talk to Ms. Benke and um Ms. Panga in terms of the submission documents and how that's going to be handled. How long do you think? I, I mean, I think right now we are just relying on the city agencies to respond, so it's difficult for me to project how long it will take.
I know that Amber Cartalian from Equity Environmental is on. Um, Amber, is there any uh uh indication of when um we may receive sign-off? We may have lost her.
Yeah, um.
We're still waiting for the revised DAS and then we will we will circulate to as needed.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, so um, I guess we've go ahead.
Uh, Vice Chair, I noticed that one of the neighbors who previously spoke still has their, has raised her hand again. Should you wish to uh provide additional comment, comments, you may forward those comments to submit at bsa.nyc.gov.
Yes, thank you.
Since you've already spoken. That goes for any of the other tenants? Or anyone else from the public?
Yes, thank you. Uh, okay, since uh no comments and I think it's waiting for uh the E S to be submitted for DEP um sign-off, so until then we will just have to wait. Okay.
We can discuss with, um, if we hear any updates.
Yes, please do.
Thank you, Chair.
Um, thank you for having all your applicant team here. Appreciate it. Alright.
Um, you want to go to the next case?
Uh, yes, I want to ask the commissioners, do you want to go to the next case? So, yes, okay, next case.
Okay. The final case is new cases, item number forty-six, twenty twenty-two thirty-one BZ three thirty-seven East sixty-fourth Street, Manhattan. It should be Jerry Johnson. You wanna mute, join his panelist, Jerry? How are you stranger? Uh, you and Eric and anyone else?
Yes, we have a number of people.
Okay.
Um, Sittle. Patel.
Aaron Schwartz, one of yours?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Uh, so is Jeff Rubin.
You take it away, Eric.
Alright.
Sattal? Okay. Jeff Rubin?
Yep.
Join his panelists, please. Mr. Schwartz also, please. Um, is that it? Jerry? Mr. Johnson, sorry.
I I believe so.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Okay, um, so Mr. Schwartz, do you wanna unmute, please? Mr. Rubin? Everybody unmute. If you can join a video, that'd be great. Those panelists. Okay, uh, raise your right hands. Do you affirm the tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board? And to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yeah, I do, yes.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, you heard what the board said at review session, please respond.
Uh, I want to uh thank the board for entertaining this application. Um, we're looking for, the school is very excited about the prospect of this site um for their uh new um high school. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Eric Knowles to respond to the questions.
Great, thanks, Jerry. Um, so, right, so we, we listened to review session. Uh, we heard the board's comments. Um, I'll kind of take them in chunks. Um, and, and group together. Uh, in terms of the plans, we heard the comments regarding um modifying the existing plans, the proposed plans in the as-of-right um uh to show the, the non-compliance in the rear yard. Um, adding a note um that no outdoor sound machines um in outdoor areas are permitted. Um, and uh the call-outs on uh the floor plans uh to indicate the sections. Um, those are fine. Um, we can make those um pretty quickly. Um, in terms of uh Madam Vice Chair's comment on the elevator bulkhead, um, we studied, the architect studied this issue for a while. Um, and this is the smallest they can make it in terms of accommodating the elevator overrun to reach the um fifth-floor mezzanine. Um, but we are still exploring um what we're gonna do in terms of materiality and, and with a name to make it lighter. I'm happy to provide um renderings um in a follow-up submission. Um, in terms of, there was a comment on, on lateral stability, I think from uh Commissioner Sheta. Um, we are currently designing a ring beam to secure the building uh for the enlargement. Um, but if you'd like us to uh discuss further how that works, um, we can respond in, in writing if need be. Um, okay.
You don't need to.
Okay.
It's, it's, and it's, it wasn't even a comment. It was just like a uh, an advice.
Sure. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I think, I think we're on it, so we appreciate the comment.
That's good, thank you.
In terms of the outdoor space. Um, so in the rear yard, uh, we heard a few comments on kind of how that would be um operated. It's a essentially a, a four-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot space that can really fit no more than ten students, uh, based on kind of the spacing. Um, we don't think it's gonna be a very noisy area. We, you know, it's, it's a passive outdoor space um that we'll use um next to the um cafeteria. Uh, you know, primarily during lunchtime, during the two periods of lunch. Uh, it will be monitored by staff, um, you know, at our existing facility on East Sixty Second Street. Um, they do have some outdoor space and that's very closely monitored by staff when students go outside and they've never had a problem there. Um, in the, you know, in the, in the many, many years that they've been there and we would monitor um this space in the same way. Um, you know, we also did uh at the request of the board, a noise analysis that's included in the revised DAS that we submitted yesterday. Um, and just as a preview, we did not trigger any thresholds when it came to the four residential buildings that were closest to us in the rear yard. Um, so, you know, we think that the, the monitoring scheme, um, kind of limiting the number of um students that can be out there, you know, during different periods, that, that should um take care of, of any sort of noise that um could be attributed to that area. Um, in terms of the fifth-floor terrace, um, this is also gonna be a passive space. Um, you know, i- i- we haven't um specifically programmed it yet, but it will similarly be monitored um when students go out there with um staff to make sure that noise is um reduced. Um, and again, you know, where we've been in the neighborhood for a hundred years, the, the school's gonna continue to be here for many, many years. And so if there's ever any issues, we're, we're happy to speak to neighbors and to, to figure out a solution to make sure that it's not um, you know, intrusive on, on their, their daily life. Um, and then I think the final, I guess, question or comment clarification um was a request for a, a neighbor ownership chart. Um, I just I, I think if, if Madam Vice Chair could. I just, I think if Manu Vice Chair could clarify what that is, because we weren't exactly sure what we're looking for.
Oh, this is regarding finding D, which is to show that the site is owned separately from the abutting lots. So it's just, it's a very simple chart where you kind of show the ownership of the subject site and immediately abutting sites to the left, to the right, and along the rear, indicating that the ownership has been not been the same. This just speaks to finding D, and I don't think you should have an issue. It's just as part of the finding.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we can, we can reach out to Ms. Pranga if there's a sample.
Yes, we do have samples. Yes, that can be provided, yeah.
Okay.
We understand, thank you.
Yep. And so I think those are all the questions that we heard, but we're happy to take any more.
I do appreciate, you know, I recognize that this school has been in the neighborhood and is aware of the neighborhood issues. I just, it's more of just, you know, I think the noise attenuation element, it's, it's a very minimal thing, and we have pretty much all the schools, whether they are parochial or charter schools or any schools where there is any rooftop use, we have always asked to provide a noise attenuation. And this is a, and I think it can be very easily be done in this case. You already have a masonry wall along the rear lot line. And so if your analysis indicates that, that there is not going to be that masonry, sorry, but that masonry wall will be enough to adequately attenuate the noise coming from that area, then that's fine. I think the roof area, they, I'm more concerned about the residence window that is abutting the fifth floor terrace and providing some kind of a noise attenuation device along that should be looked into. I'm not sure if the noise from that is going to affect that much of your, of the neighbors across the street, because it's a very, 64th Street is a pretty busy street, and you probably, your ambient noise level will be, it's much higher. Maybe your analysis will show that. I haven't looked at your analysis. But at least the windows that are abutting the building should be looked at. And similarly, as Commissioner Artley Brown pointed out, the building to the west, which has occupants are of very sensitive nature and to ensure that they, they're us. The peace and quiet of the occupants of that building is also meeting. So that's why those questions were asked.
Well, we will respond more in detail. I want to, this is Jerry. I wanted to explain the noise analysis in the rear shows that there, with with just the wall and the location of where it is in the rear, that there is no impact on the adjacent residential uses using a conservative analysis of a children's playground noise levels. So we're not anticipating any impact on the adjacent residential uses in the rear. We'll respond to the noise question on the front deck.
Jerry, Mr. Rubin is a member of your team. He has his hand up. Is there, does he want to add something? I don't know, is there something? We can't hear you, thank you.
I'm sorry, I hope you can hear me now. No, I'm sorry. I think my hand was just up to get a panelist a while back.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for asking.
So, Mr. Johnson, so the conservative noise analysis that was down was based on playgrounds, so which is, okay.
Yep.
So, all right. And and the facility that is located to the west, is that built to the lot line?
It is. And it's a cancer care center. And it's fully enclosed and attenuated.
Fully enclosed, okay, all right.
Outpatient, no overnight, no overnight stays, it's outpatient.
So maybe you can clarify those in your statement to kind of strengthen your argument. But I'm still concerned about the fifth floor, especially to the east.
Understood.
Okay. Any questions or any comments? I do have one question, and that is with regards to the, sorry to go back to the elevator. The elevator size seemed pretty generous. Is there any particular reason to have such a big elevator? I think I know the answer, but I do want it on record as to why.
I'll let Siddle answer, but I believe the short answer is that it's also a stair, a circulation stair that comes up from the lower levels all the way up to the top. So it's within the dormer area, and then the elevator is next to it, which has the overrun that goes above.
Okay, that is, that is correct. With respect to the size of the elevator, which I may have heard that as your question is why is the elevator? The size of the elevator is a function of both it being a passenger elevator and a freight elevator. So there is an expectation of carrying chairs and tables and everything up to the fifth floor gymnasium gathering space and through the building. So it's a dual purpose elevator, and it also meant to carry large numbers of spectators down or, you know, spectators as they exit the building on a game situation. So that's why the size of the elevators as, as minute, it is sized appropriately.
Okay, yes, thank you for the explanation. You may want to put that in your statement as, and why that is also resulting in addition to the dormer and the stairs. So I did like the neighborhood analysis, character analysis, where you did the 3D and showed the area of encroachment. So somehow they translate that into the drawings and the black and white version, because that's what's going to go to the Buildings Department. And for future boards' reference, that is the drawing that is going to be referred to. And I did not have any other comments. Commissioners, any questions for the applicants, for the applicant team?
Commissioners are nodding no?
No.
Is that correct?
Ms. Benke, any update on the environmental?
I just want to let you know that the plans under review at DOT are, do include the bus drop off area, so that that will be looked at. And yes, we, we have circulated all the documents as discussed at the review session and will await responses.
So is this a bus drop off or is this like people, resident parents dropping off, guardians dropping off?
It's going to be parents. You know, we did a, oh, sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah. There are, we don't, we don't have buses coming to the school. It's primarily students walking or taking public transportation.
And that has been analyzed in your environmental report in terms of triggen and review?
Yes.
So just in your findings in your neighborhood character or just indicate the amount of trip that would be generated and how, or what would the impact be in terms of traffic? That also goes to the neighborhood character.
Yeah, I believe we put the modal splits in there, but I can, I can double check.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And, okay, so since none of the commissioners have any additional questions, let's open it up to the public.
Okay, the case we are currently discussing is 202231BZ, 337 East 64th Street, Manhattan. This is a variance to permit the conversion enlargement of an existing building to facilitate a school known as the Browning School, contrary to underlining rear heightened setback regulations. Should you wish to discuss, please dial in 646-558-8656 or our toll free number, which is 888-475-4499. You will enter the webinar ID number 878-1213-3331 and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign. Once you're in, you can press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute to speak if you're on the phone. And if you were in the Zoom room already and wish to speak on this matter, please raise a Zoom hand, raise the hand that is on the bottom of your screen. Once you are allowed in, you will have three minutes to speak. Let me set the clock, sorry.
Okay. Sorry, excuse me. What is the timeframe of, in terms of occupancy?
They would like to be there for fall of 2024. But obviously, there's a lot of work to do in the interim. So, you know, anything we could do to, to expedite our decision would be, I know greatly appreciated by that school.
Yeah, I think a lot of it is relying on the sister agencies to sign off.
Yep.
We, so how long will it take for you to make these corrections that we have asked?
Um, you know, probably no more than a couple of weeks. I mean, we would, you know, as you mentioned, depending on how the sister agencies, their review, I mean, we would seek to get on the November 14, 15 calendar.
Okay, so what I would like to do is make, I don't want to go through too many iterations. We don't have that many comments, but should there be any conditions or anything that that may come up from the DEP review or DOT review and that needs to be reflected in the plan? I think it would be best we try to marry those two together in a way so that you revise the plan one more time, reflecting all the comments that's been discussed today and also what may come out of the reviews from DEP and DOT. And, and then submit it. So is that, we will do our best in terms of in that. Does that sound reasonable to the team?
Yes, yes.
So I don't want to go too many, I don't want to go back and forth too much. So please in the next submission, especially with regards to that treatment of that facade. I think, Mr. Patel, you, you understand what I'm getting at is it's something that doesn't make it look so bulky and kind of lets it disappear, some treatment of material that lets it, and yet is very respectful of the facade and the surrounding. It is a beautifully, beautiful building that you have, and I'm glad to see that you're preserving it. Okay, so we will get back to you and we, maybe we'll try to, you know, try to hold some time in some of, in one of our upcoming hearings for the school in anticipation of a sign off from the agencies, and we will coordinate that, but we'll get back to you.
Okay, great.
See if it is possible to hold a date in November or in December. October is not possible, but November, December, depending upon agencies, all the agencies are backed up, so we are doing our best to coordinate with them.
Just to note, in terms of the hazmat, there will be testing that needs to be done once the, the work plan is approved. So I'm not sure how long that will take, aside from the air quality and noise issue. So, and DOT.
I see, I see our executive director's hand up.
Yeah, no, we definitely will reach out to the applicant's team to try to coordinate a date that, you know, I guess it can, we can try to achieve sign offs or get closer and avert any unnecessary adjournments of a next hearing.
Yeah. Ms. Benke, going back to the hazmat issue, is that some, no, that cannot be worked on now, right? It has to.
We need DEP to approve the plan first, and then they can do the testing and remedial action plan if required at the same time, just to save time.
Okay.
Couldn't that be done, but couldn't that though be done post approval as part of the condition or whatever, so that we can, we can move forward with other things while we're, while we're doing the testing?
That's not the board's practice at this time unless there's a E designation on the site.
Okay.
So I think that is something you should discuss with Ms. Benke and amongst your team, whether you want to consider doing an E designation to.
Understood.
Okay.
And that's usually approved by DEP, and it has to do with like not being able to do the work like physically at this moment.
Understood.
Yeah.
Okay, are we done?
Okay, yes, thank you. Any further questions from any of the commissioners, from the applicant? Any clarification? Okay, all right, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes the public hearing for October 4, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, good to see you.